Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the, it is six o'clock. Welcome to the Gastonia City Council Meeting of March 3rd. Sort of a repeat or leftover from one we didn't have two weeks ago, or whatever. But it's good to have everyone here today. We've got a lot to cover tonight, a lot to do, so we're gonna get started. I would like to, at this time, to, like I said, welcome everyone, and also to, before the prayer by Councilman Gallagher, and after the prayer, we'll stand, all of us, for the pledge of allegiance to the flag behind us. I would like to say, before the prayer, that we, in the last several weeks since we've met, we've, of course, had a lot of people to, that are grieving over the deceased, and folks that have passed away, and there's no way in the world we could name them all. We'd like to, if we could, but I would like to just mention very briefly, before the prayer, Jim, about the, I think it was about three years ago that all of us were sworn in over next door, and are down at the courthouse, and I ask at that time that we, as part of the ceremony, that Dr. John Frye, Reverend Dr. John Frye, from First Presbyterian, come, he ironically, before he went into ministry, was the mayor of Robbins for a good many years, but he lost his wife, aged sixty-one, just a couple of weeks ago, and I'd just like to certainly remember, he does so much good, as all ministers do, and then, of course, had to take, certainly wanted to take care of her. Her name was Denise, they called her Nisi, wonderful, wonderful lady, and I will say to, especially to Mr. Bomadere and Mr. McAtier, that she was the first, and this was in her service, she was the very first co-ed head cheerleader at North Carolina State, so I thought, she always would tell you that, too, so I thought, that's right, and she would say that. Okay, if we could, please pray at this time.
Close your eyes, bow our heads. May the words of thy mouth and the meditations of my heart be pleasing to you, oh Lord, my rock and my redeemer. Lord, I'd like to lift up the John Frye family and the loss of his wife. I just ask you to give them comfort, Lord. Also, Lord, I pray for our troops that are overseas, that are fighting the good fight. I pray you're with them and their families, and bring them home safely, Lord. Also, I pray for you to provide us with wisdom, Lord, wisdom from on high, to do the city's business as best we can, for it's in your son's strong name, we pray, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everyone. This time, I'd like to have adoption of the agenda, item C, is there a motion?
Motion here, sir.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, item C. Item D is the approval of the minutes, we'll take them separately, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of January 20th, is there a motion?
Motion here, sir.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, the other, the next one is the regular council meeting of February 3rd, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second here.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, and the strategic planning workshop, February 7th of 2015, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you very much. Item E, Councilman Gallagher is chairman, we're just gonna work you tonight, the three proclamations of awards, ceremonies, and promotions committee, the first one's the proclamation of the development, excuse me, developmental disability awareness month, the second one's Arbor Day, and the third one is multiple sclerosis awareness week. Mr. Gallagher, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sarah Osborne, is she here?
Sir.
Sarah's the director for ARC here in Gaston County, and they're going to be having a Mardi Gras this Friday, and I believe they still have tickets on sale, so if you go online and look up ARC of Gaston County, you'll be more than grateful to attend, it's for a good cause. This proclamation's on the developmental disability awareness month, March 15th. Whereas the development, developmental disabilities are conditions which affect more than seven million Americans and their families, and whereas people with developmental disabilities are defined by their own strengths, abilities, and inherent value, not only by their disabilities, and whereas people with their developmental disabilities are entitled to respect, dignity, equality, safety, and security accorded to other members of society, and are equal before the law, and whereas people with developmental disabilities belong in the community and have a fundamental moral, civil, and constitutional rights to be fully included and actively participate in all aspects of society, and whereas people with developmental disabilities with appropriate resources and supports can make decisions about their own lives and must be heard on issues that affect their well-being, and whereas in the spirit, in this spirit, the city of Gastonia recognizes Tuesday, March 3rd, 2005, as developmental disability awareness day, and the month of March 2015 as developmental disability awareness month. Now therefore, I, John D. Bridgeman, mayor of the city of Gastonia, the undersigned, do hereby proclaim March 2015 as developmental disability awareness month in Gastonia, North Carolina. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused official seal of the city of Gastonia to be affixed this third day of March 2015, and I give this to Sarah Osborne.
Thank you all very much for recognizing us again this year. It is certainly an honor, not only to be with you all here, but to also know your involvement and your support of people with developmental disabilities in Gaston County. We've been around since 1961, so it's been an exciting road, although I've not been here that long, I'll celebrate my ten-year anniversary in April, but developmental disability awareness month is celebrated and recognized across the nation throughout the month, and as Councilman Gallagher mentioned, our biggest fundraiser we have is Shamrock the House, our Mardi Gras gala, which is this Friday. I know Mr. McAtier and Mr. Gallagher and his wife will be attending, so again, if time frees up, we'd love to have you and come out and celebrate with us as we kick off the month. Thank you again for your time and for this recognition.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Yes, ma'am.
Motion to accept the proclamation.
Second here.
Second, discussion, all in favor, stand up.
Renee Southard?
The next proclamation we're gonna be doing is on Arbor Day. Renee Southard is from KGB, and it's not the Russian KGB, it's really the Keep Gastonia Beautiful KGB, correct?
Correct.
Here it is, proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed in planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. I find Nebraska to be very cold, but anyway, I guess they did it in April, it must've been warm. Whereas in 2015, this is the 143rd anniversary of the holiday, Arbor Day, is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees are renewable source and beautify our community, and whereas Keep Gastonia Beautiful shall observe Arbor Day at Martha Rivers Park this coming Friday, March 13, not this Friday, the following Friday, as Gastonia has been named Tree City USA for the year, for North Carolina, the Tree City USA for the fourteenth year in a row, and shall this day receive this award, and now therefore be resolved, the mayor and council, City Council of Gastonia do hereby proclaim Keep Gastonia Beautiful Celebration Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support the efforts protected, to protect our trees and woodlands, and further encourage all citizens to plant trees in Gastonia for our future generations. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the official seal of the city of Gastonia to be affixed this third day of March in the year of our Lord, 2015, Mayor John D. Bridgeman. And Renee, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Bridgeman, City Council, thank you so much for this proclamation, we really appreciate it. You will be receiving the Tree City Award for our fourteenth year, and as was said, it will be at Martha Rivers Park on the 13th, we hope you can all join us. We will also be giving for the 11th year, the Growth Award. This is, you know, an amazing thing for our city, and we're very, very proud of our Arbor Day celebration. A state representative from the Urban Forestry Service from Raleigh will be attending. We currently have seven schools that participate with us, with over 370 students, and we love the participation of our young people, we know that's how, you know, we teach, we teach them how to grow, so. We also will be doing an Arbor Day poster contest, we do this yearly, but most importantly, we'll be doing the tree plantings, and that's very exciting, and we know many of you join us, and we would love to invite all of you to join us, if you can. We'll be planting the maple and oaks this year, and each of the seven schools will be represented with a tree planting. So we're grateful for the electrical department, thank you very much for the assistance that they give us, and for all that has been afforded to the, to us from the Evergreen Tree Program. This continues the planting of trees throughout the year, when we lose them to storms and weather such as we've had lately, and we hope to see you at the event. I'd also like to mention just a couple of other things, real quickly. We are doing the black gold and the mulch sales, those will continue this Friday for the next four weeks, so it's garden time, everybody needs to be coming and seeing us. We also have a bowling tournament, I hope everyone has a team, this is so much fun. Last year was the first year that we did this, and we had, we just had a ball doing it, so I encourage each of you to get a team together, you can come by yourself if you choose, that's fine, too, but we love getting teams together and, and, you know, doing team building skills with our coworkers and friends and family, so I know the Carlin family, they were really bowling last year, that was, that was really great. And on March 28th, we also have the tree sale at the Gastonia Farmers Market. This, too, is sponsored, thank you, by the electrical department, and again, thank you so much for the proclamation, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Renee.
Congratulations.
We need a motion here?
Yes.
Yes, we do, please.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, please. Thank you. Next, Mr. Gallagher.
The next proclamation is regarding Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week, National Multiple Sclerosis, the MS Society. The mayor's come down because his daughter's affected with MS, and this is near and dear to his heart. Whereas the week of March 2nd to the 8th, 2015, has been designated as Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week by the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, and whereas multiple sclerosis is a neurological disease of the central nervous system that generally strikes people in the prime of life, between the ages of 20 and 50, and causes unpredictable effects which the progression severity, severity and specific symptoms cannot be foreseen, and the cause and the cure for this often debilitating disease remain unknown, and whereas MS affects 2.3 million people worldwide, and each hour someone is newly diagnosed, and the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, the Greater Carolina Chapter, reports that in our state, more than 13,000 people are diagnosed with MS. And whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, Greater Carolina Chapter, is committed to a world free of MS, heightening public knowledge about the insight into the disease, and whereas since 1946, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been driving a force, have been a driving force of MS research and relentless pursuit, pursuing prevention, treatment, and a cure, and has invested more than $868 million in the groundbreaking research. Whereas discovering the cause, finding a cure, and preventing future generations from being diagnosed with MS is an important task that all Americans and North Carolinians should support, and whereas the city of Gastonia recognizes the importance of finding the cause and cure of MS, and expresses its appreciation for the dedication that the National Multiple Sclerosis Society's Greater Carolina Chapter has shown towards a future free of MS. Now therefore, I, John D. Bridgeman, mayor of the city of Gastonia, do hereby proclaim March 2nd to the 8th, 2015, as MS Awareness Week in Gastonia, North Carolina, in recognition of the thousands of families impacted and the daily challenges of multiple sclerosis, and I encourage the citizens of Gastonia, this is Mayor John D. Bridgeman saying this, to learn more about MS, what they can do to support individuals with MS and their families. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the official seal of the city of Gastonia to be affixed this third day in the year of our Lord, 2015, Mayor John D. Bridgeman. We do have overflow seating upstairs, if you need it.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation for Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week.
Second.
All in favor, please. Thank you. Yep. Yeah, I'm gonna do that right after this presentation. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher, and Councilman Gallagher, proclamations. The item F is the presentation on the agenda. Ms. Kathleen Boyce, Council Director, Girls on the Run of Gaston County, reference request for in-kind services, the Girls on the Run 5K at Leinburger Park, May the 9th. Madam First Lady, Belmont, you still are, so, you always will be. It's good to have you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I am here to request the in-kind services of the city of Gastonia for what I believe is our third annual Spring 15 5K for Girls on the Run. We look forward to having our girls, their families, and our coaches, and the public out in Leinburger Park to promote fitness and celebrate the accomplishments of our girls.
Questions of Ms. Boyce, anyone?
Yes, sir.
Did you do this last year?
We did. I, we, the first year we did it, we did it jointly with Cancer Services, and then I believe this is our third year doing this, just as Girls on the Run.
Now, do you have to be a member of Girls on the Run, or can girls just...
No, we welcome males and females, I mean, it is open to the public, and we are encouraging everybody to come out and walk and run with us, or to come and observe, but it's definitely, it's a family-friendly event.
Excellent, and do you know how many you had last year?
My guess is we have about a thousand attendees, counting, I mean, in the, our spring season is a little smaller than our fall season, we have over 300 girls registered right now, we have between 150 and 200 coaches, so they'll all be participating. Every girl is strongly encouraged slash required, you have a running buddy, because it is a large race, and then we open it up to the public and promote it as widely and as enthusiastically as we can.
Do you get many people that come there the day of the event to sign up and run?
Um, I think most runners have gotten so that they don't, I mean, we offer day, race day registration, but we, everybody's gone so much towards online registration that, and then we, the couple of days right before, we have in-person registration at Walk and Run Belmont, our local running shoe store, so we, I mean, we, we try to accommodate anybody that wants to participate.
Excellent, thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Motion to.
Notion?
Oh, please.
Please, doctor.
I'll move if you approve.
I'll second.
Okay. There's the second, any other question? All in favor? Thank you, ma'am.
Well, thank you, and I encourage you, that date is May 9th, and we would love to have you out there, and I'll give a plug for the run, excuse me, the Community Foundation Run 2015 is on April 18th, and we will be participating in that, as well as Let Me Run, the boys, sort of brother program, too, to our program. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. The, we're going into public expression now, but before we do, and this will just take this moment, I'd like to, I believe we have a couple of boy scouts that have come into the room, and I'd like to ask them to come forward and introduce themselves at the microphone over here, and also to tell us what about your troop and so on there. David? I'll begin with you, I see you two out there, come right ahead, just give us your name and tell us what you're doing, what you're working on, and...
My name's David Efferd, and I'm from Troop 11, and I came here to work on the citizenship and the community merit badge.
What is your rank?
I'm getting ready to get first class.
Great.
My name's William Demore, I'm from Troop 11, and I came here to get my citizenship and the community merit badge, and I'm also second class.
Fantastic, great. Yes, hold on, we got a question, go ahead.
Are either one of these badges that you're working on necessary for your Eagle Scout?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you working toward that?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, keep it up, good job.
How many badges do you have for Eagles so far?
I think I have eight merit badges. I think I have four.
Well, we're glad you're here, thank you both, very much. The public expression, let's see, okay, there's a public hearing, and I have one name, very, well, no name here, someone named Tracy Philbeck on the public expression, Mr. Chairman, Chairman of the Gaston County Commission, and I know you have another meeting, so we appreciate you, you being here, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Tracy Philbeck, I reside at 2635 Puyett Chapel Road, Dallas, North Carolina, Honorable Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing me to come and speak. I wanted to speak during public, the public hearing, but I don't think I'm gonna be able to, I have a couple more meetings to attend. I wanna say three things, I think I have, what, five minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I wanna talk about three things. One, what Martin Luther King means to me, two, why I think it's important to name a street after Martin Luther King, and three, why I think it's important to think about what you're doing and do it in such a way that brings people together, and it's done in an economical way. First of all, what does Martin Luther King mean to me? Well, I'm white, so a lot of folks wonder, what does he mean to you? Well, what I want you to know is this, Martin Luther King is not just about African-American history, Martin Luther King is about American history, all Americans. In his speech, he talks about that he dreams of the sons of former slave owners and the sons of former slaves one day sitting down at the table of brotherhood. He also talks about that one day he had a vision, a hope, that little white girls and little white boys and little black girls and little white boys would one day be able to hold hands. He was a little different from Malcolm X, Malcolm X was a separatist, he believed that blacks belonged over here and whites over here. Martin Luther King believed in integration, he believed that we are all, whether we're black, white, or whatever color, we're brothers and sisters, that was his belief. So that's what it means to me as a white American. Second, what does it, why should you name a street after Martin Luther King? And I wrote this down, so I'm gonna kinda read it. Street naming incorporates history into the fabric of everyday life, such as addresses, maps, business cards, and of course, road signs. Street names are unique memorials because of their connectivity, their ability to unite different people in places under a common point of identity. However, it is this potential to touch diverse communities that also makes street naming controversial. People differ in the extent in which they relate to Dr. King and wish to have their streets associated with him. Perception may play a role. Journalist John T. Love observed, "For many whites, a street sign that says Martin Luther King tells them they are lost. For many blacks, a street sign that says Martin Luther King tells them they are found." Either way, the naming of streets for Dr. King creates public discussion of ongoing issues of race and identity in America, and forces us to acknowledge and try to overcome our differences. There is no doubt racism exists, it exists among blacks, it exists among whites, it's what we all have in common, everybody sins, racism is a sin, we all stereotype, anybody that says they don't is lying, so the whole point of doing this is to remember our legacy, remember a tragic history in America, but also the triumph of someone that came and spoke and said, hey, let's not separate, let's integrate, let's treat each other as brothers and sisters. I think that is something that Gaston County and the city of Gastonia can celebrate, and I want to applaud you for doing that. Third, the economic impact. I don't know which road you're gonna choose, I think we've talked about half of Marietta, all of Marietta, Long Avenue, Councilman Pierceall has brought forth an idea where you would name Marietta Martin Luther King and maybe do a little bit different with the streets, I think that's a positive idea. What I would just ask you to do is this, think about what you're doing, do it in a way that brings everybody together, doesn't make one person shoulder the cost, and what it will do, instead of dividing people, at the end of the day, you can do exactly what the legacy of Dr. King is, unite the county, the city, the businesses, and all of us, black, white, green, yellow, and things of that nature. So that's all I wanted to say, I thank you, I know you have a tough job, there's no easy decision, there's always somewhat, 500 different people telling you 500 different things, but I think it's important, I think it's a positive for our community, and I applaud you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that is the public expression that's signed up for the night, we, we'll go ahead, and we got the consent agenda that you, we've been looking at for a few days now, so is, is there a motion to...
The adoption.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Okay. All right.
Mayor, if I could, I know the next one was the regular agenda, item number... Item number ten is the public hearing, and that will be the first item under regular agenda. If I could ask the mayor for just a moment to approach the podium, I'd like to distribute something that might be beneficial during the public hearing and maybe answer some questions as we move into that.
I would call to order a public hearing. I'll read it while you do that. Item ten is the public hearing for consideration of the renaming of a portion of Marietta Street to Martin Luther King Jr. Way.
What you're looking at is a map, and you'll notice here is the county courthouse, here is the Department of Social Services, and here's the Sheriff's Department and the jail. What you see in pink going down the middle is currently what is known as North Marietta Street. The public hearing involves renaming this street Martin Luther King Jr. Way, which would eliminate the name of North Marietta Street on our maps and roads in Gastonia. The county's objection to this, and also several citizens, has been that if we rename this, these three large county service buildings will have to change quite a lot, and it will be quite expensive. There's an alternative plan that I've proposed. So far, the county has been receptive. If this road renaming is approved tonight, then the Gastonia City staff would be working with the Gaston County staff on this arrangement. But you'll notice in the yellow, this is the driveway into the Department of Social Services, and then across the street, here's the driveway to the courthouse, the Sheriff's Department, and the jail. Since North Marietta Street would be off of the books and roadmap, we would simply take that name and rename these two private drives North Marietta Street. Saves the county from having to rename or any expense on anything. All it requires is a vote from the county commissioners, because it is private land, and the city would bear the cost of the new street sign. But it eliminates all cost issues related that have been brought forward as far as county government. It does not affect private citizens or private businesses on down the road. But I know there was a lot of, of questions about that. It is something that we have discussed just briefly with some of the county commissioners. This is not approved by them. But if, if this road name change is approved tonight, it is something we would bring forward and work with their staff on that. So, I just wanted to present that. If anybody wants a map, we'll leave them up here, several. And then we can start the public hearing, but I appreciate the time, Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Okay, sir. Thank you, Councilman. And I think at this time, what do we want to do?
Well, just briefly, in the agenda, Mr. Mayor, there are two resolutions in front of you. One of them proposes to rename Marietta Street Martin Luther King Jr. Way from Franklin to Walnut, and then the second resolution is from Franklin all the way to the city limits. There were a couple of typos in that second one, but Ms. Creighton has found them and corrected them. If you choose to adopt that second option, she will have the correct copy for the mayor's signature. The resolution is then sent to the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and you've got a delayed effective date of at least September first to give them time to act on the request. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Smith. Anyone?
When, when you say September first, that's just when North Carolina DOT would-
We would ask, we would ask them to do it by then. They do have to rule on it. We would ask them to do it by then, and also that gives six months to everyone on the street to get ready for it.
So that would be the effective date that the name change would take place, would be September first?
We would ask the DOT to make that the effective date. Yes, sir.
We'll go ahead with, if you, suits the council, we'll go ahead with the, in the public hearing of the, uh, people that like to speak at this time. Then we'll, then we'll talk. I'm going exactly down the, the list as it was signed up. The first one, and I, what I'll do is call the next one to be ready. I think, I don't know if everyone's in this room. There's some upstairs, possibly in the room upstairs. Mr. Ken Di, nine oh eight North Marietta Street, Gastonia. Mr. Di. After, Mr. Di is, is Joe Husttler, eight thirty North Marietta Street.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Kenneth Di. My business is Gastonia Pipe and Boiler Insulations, and it's located at nine oh eight North Marietta Street. We've been there approximately forty years. We're a family-run business. And as a business owner, I wear many hats. I might be unloading a truck in one minute, dealing with insurance the next, dealing with, uh, human resources the next minute. And I, I'm not really opposed to the first part where it's, the name change would be just the first four blocks. I'm not opposed to that. I am opposed for taking it on down, and, and there's some reasons why. It's going to cost me quite a bit of money to do that, such as, I've got websites, my cards, all my letterheads, and even my Yellow Pages. Like, if you change it in September, my address is still going to be Marietta Street. Okay? And, uh, there's going to be quite a bit of labor associated with changing it also, because who's going to have to do all of that work? To call all of the people that I have to change the addresses and tell them where to ship my materials to and all that? It's a lot involved in it. And guess who has to do that? It falls back on me, you know? I, uh, seen a quote in the paper by the mayor, and I just wanted him to clarify as this. He said, this is Gaston Gazette, and it says, "It doesn't really hurt anyone or cost anything much," he said, "and I think it would show well for Gastonia." Well, Mr. Mayor, it, it, it will cost some people some money. It's not even going to cost me, um, as a taxpayer, it's going to cost me personally also, you know, and, and a lot of time, my labor, where I could be out making money doing something else. And that's my only objection to it, is that it's going to cost me quite a bit of money on it, you know? And we've been there for forty years, and people knows where we at. It's going to take a while for them to change. If we was to change it like Mr. Peckrally said, did I get that right?
I like that.
They might start circling the courthouse and looking for me on North Marietta Street, you know? I didn't, you know, just thinking about it. Another thing that I wouldn't be object to is, have you thought about maybe, if you want to take it farther, take it down to Davidson Street? Would miss most of the businesses down that way, you know? Have y'all reached out to any of the business owners down that way to see how it's going to affect them? Have y'all reached out to them and just seen? And, uh, another thing is, I've got a long company name. It's Gastonia Pipe Boiler Duck Insolations Incorporated, and then I'm going to have to change it to Martin Luther King Jr. Way. That's going to be a mouthful, I'll just tell you the truth. I mean, have you had thought about maybe abbreviating the name if you do change it, like M L K Junior Way? You know, that would be a little bit easier for us, too. But I don't know which way y'all going tonight, because I'm confused, because it's been put out there, four blocks, and then city limits. I don't know which way you going, so, but if you, I'm not opposed to the four blocks, but I am opposed to the rest of the way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Husttler? Joe Husttler? Okay. Next is Mr. Ben Brackett. After Mr. Brackett will be Dr. James Chandler.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, honorable counsel, all folks here. I read today's paper, and I read the article that Jim wrote, that Mr. Pierceall made a suggestion. I liked that. Well, I was sitting there talking to my wife about it. My wife said, well, I can come up with something that would be just as dramatic, a lot more visible, and would only cost a signage. What is wrong with naming the bridge right there at Marietta Martin Luther King Memorial Bridge? You've got the Martin Luther King Parkway right there, or not Parkway, what's it called? The Plaza? Plaza? If I'm not mistaken, there's a memorial there, isn't it? So, you know, this old gal's not that dumb, you know? I don't know if it would make anybody happy or not, but hopefully, if they put, if they did that and changed the name of that bridge, I don't think it has a name now. They'd do a much better job of signage than they did up at Lowry, because if you're coming toward town, you know where Lowry is, but if you're coming from King's Mountain, it's backwards. But that's all I wanted to say. You know, hopefully, we'll get this thing smoothed out. Everybody'll be happy with what happens. You know? There's not many memorial bridges in Gaston County, I don't believe, but there are all over the country.
Actually, your wife has an excellent idea, but the bridge is already named Martin Luther King Jr. Bridge.
Is it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I wasn't aware of that.
So she, she did have a good idea, somebody just beat her to it, so.
Okay. But that being, uh, already done, you know, we've got what? We've got two different things there. Folks, I'd also like to remind you that your only job as government is to protect the people. Hopefully, y'all don't see me up here next month wanting to name Franklin Boulevard, Chalkton-Heston Boulevard, or Chris Kyle Boulevard. Thank you much.
Dr. Chandler? After Dr. James Chandler is Mr. Kenneth Glenn, I think it is.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Dr. James Chandler. I am a business owner. I'm a naturopath here in Gastonia. I live at nineteen fifty-one Road and Court here in Gastonia. And this evening, I'd like to address the city's, City Council in general terms regarding the specific issue of Martin Luther King Way. Make no mistakes, I'm not opposed to honoring Dr. Martin Luther King, nor am I opposed to bringing the community together, as some of you have stated that we need to do. But what I'd like to suggest to you is that you pay attention to what's going on. There's other ways of doing this. I know that, that you've been sent a letter from local tea parties suggesting ways that you can name the parts of Marietta without actually going through the, the official name change thing. Mr. Pierceall has some good ideas about renaming North Marietta, the private park, the private driveways. Mr. Philbeck has some good ideas. And we all know that now, that the bridge is named Martin Luther King Bridge. There's a monument honoring Dr. Martin Luther King, Martin Luther King Plaza, at the corner of Long and Marietta. What I do find disturbing about all of this is that I believe that the council is going a little too fast. I think you ought to, to slow down, think this through thoroughly, because there, there is a lot of cost involved. If you take in the cost of the gentleman that preceded me, the cost of business, doing business in Gastonia, doing business at the courthouse, where state costs, county costs, the jail, social services or DSS, all of these people have costs associated with this. And it's your job as council members to reduce costs wherever necessary, wherever you can. It's our money. It's our money. Taxpayer money that's going into these changes. We've seen changes that come through this council before. We've seen where you have increased the length of your service to the county, to the city. We've seen where you now, you know, want to stagger the elections so that not all of you are elected at the same time. You know, we've seen where you've spent tax dollars on places like art space. We see now that you're wanting to raise maybe the, the rate for city transit. You know, that, that's been a debacle in the past. We've seen things where, you know, you're, you're doing public-private partnerships. And I think you ought to stop. I think you ought to take a look at what you're doing, where our tax money is going, what our tax money is being used for, and go back to the principal guidelines of governments. Spend our money wisely. And I think that you need to take a break. I think you need to reevaluate what you're doing here and the reasons that you're doing it. I know I've been told by reliable sources that there's at least two members on this board that oppose changing the name of Marietta Street, and, but they're going to vote for it anyway. They're going to vote for it anyway, because if they don't vote for it, then they're going to be considered racist. Well, for those two people, at least those two people, I say, vote your conscience. If you can't vote your conscience, don't vote at all. And if you don't have the courage to do what's politically correct and what's politically asked of you, then don't run for office. I thank you for your time. I'm sure you'll do the best for the city. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kenneth Glenn. I live at nineteen thirty-eight Fuller Drive, Gastonia, North Carolina. Good evening to my former employer. Just recently retired. But I thought this was important enough to get up and say a few things after I was asked, uh, to hear the remarks and, uh, other people, not intended to offend, but I know why this is important to me. And it's not about money. I'm getting on up in age now, part of the baby boomers. I've got grandchildren. I've got great-grandchildren now. And, uh, since nineteen fifty-seven, I've been in Gaston County. I've seen it progress. I've seen improvements. I was one of the first eleven black students to integrate. Progress has come hard, but Gaston, I believe, has been out front. And Gaston is moving on, in spite of opposition and things that are said. But I think it's important to, uh, have a legacy, or have something to tell your children and your grandchildren. And, uh, right now, as we go down Marietta, people see social service building, they see the courthouse, they see the Sheriff's Department. But when my children would come up or ask them about these places, different names about things, and when I hear, I want to be able to tell them something. And they don't see where it used to be Costner Funeral Home. They don't see where it used to be the first black fire department. They won't turn the corner, and they will not see the first black mayor, T. Jeffers, where he stayed on Walnut. They don't see these things, the first black theater, all in this, uh, way, in this area down here. And if we name it, I would like to see them name it so it wouldn't be so offensive to everybody, but we're going to have some oppositions. But to do it in a sensible way, I approve, I'm for it. I, I want to be able to tell my grandchildren, this is where we came from. This is what was done. I remember when we were part of Highland, we had to come that way. I remember when we were part of Highland, we had to, uh, come that way. When we had our marches from York to Marietta, when we marched for segregation, being a part of that, I see all these guys, much of them can talk, much better than me. Tracy, if she's still here, preached at our church, couldn't talk like him. His father also, I tell you, enjoy them. But it is very important to us, uh, at my age, to be able to say to my grandchild, this is where such and such happened, this is what this happened. And to be able to relate to them. Uh, all those places are gone, the theaters are gone, all those places are gone where we marched and we didn't fight. We struggled through, but we came together and made things happen. So I am for this, not only because it's, uh, the right thing to do, but I am for this because I wanna be able to tell my children about this great city of Gastonia. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, I didn't, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Glenn, I, I didn't, James Biggers, while you're standing, you're next on the list, and I forgot to, to mention, after that, you, you're next.
If I may.
Yes, sir. Well, she's on here, too. Okay. Just go ahead now, and.
One thing I might request is more room for you.
Mr. James Biggers.
Thank you.
Then Mr. Jim Carver, go ahead.
Well, if you know me, you know how important this is to me. And again, we do have a crew working on a memorial sign, naming the black businesses from that community. The fact that it doesn't exist anymore should not mean it never existed. So again, uh, I'm in line with what's to take place. We're, we're behind schedule for a city our size. So I'll say, do the best you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Big. Thank you, sir. Mr. Jim Carver, next is, uh, Mr. Ms. Gibson out of, uh, Mount Holly is next.
Thank you for the opportunity to participate tonight, council members. Uh, my name's Jim Carver, and my business is at nine fourteen North Marietta Street in Gastonia. And we've been at that location since nineteen ninety-two, so about twenty-three years. Uh, it's very difficult as a small business owner to be in business these days because of the myriad of mandates that come down the road most every day that we have to manage, and some of the former speakers have already mentioned that. But, uh, where our business is located, we're in somewhat of a depressed area because most of the, uh, businesses have been there many years, some biz- that some of the buildings are even vacant. Uh, we've had issues with ongoing, uh, crime and that sort of thing. And, uh, there's not really been any s- sign of any expansion in our area. I don't know, since I've been there, there's been a new structure even built in the last twenty years. And it seems that the, uh, city is maintaining sort of a double standard. And when I say that, uh, there's many times when I look in the, uh, paper and read in the media, there are, uh, different subsidies that are offered to certain areas of the city, namely the downtown district. But those, uh, benefits have not ventured, uh, up in our area. So, uh, there's been a lot of effort made by the council to attract businesses to our area, but at the same time, they've not done very little to try to, uh, help the businesses that are already here that have been ongoing for many years. And in a lot of cases, those subsidized efforts, uh, they don't stay around very long. They're here as long as the subsidy exists, and then they're, uh, down the road. And some of us business owners, we've been here many years, and we've paid our own way. And, uh, this, uh, uh, resolution that's been discussed is gonna create financial burden, uh, to our business. Uh, we've got to, uh, go through and change a lot of our documentation. We have, uh, training documents for employees that are mandated, uh, by, at the state and federal level. Uh, we have to go through and change if the, if the, uh, street change goes through. We have to go back and reprocess all that information, and that costs money and it takes time. And, uh, as a small business owner of about twenty-five employees, uh, you know, again, as Ken mentioned, I have a, I wear a lot of hats, and I don't have the time to really deal with that. Uh, so certainly, uh, not only we have this impending financial burden if the name change goes through, but, uh, we also have an impending, uh, tax increase that we haven't received yet, and it's coming at some point. And I'm guessing that the value of property, even though our area is somewhat, uh, depressed from a development standpoint, we're probably gonna be looking at additional tax burden as well. Uh, I'm in favor of renaming the, uh, North Marietta Street to Walnut Street. Uh, it encompasses, uh, the area where the, uh, service buildings are, the courthouse, sheriff's department. But, uh, in some way, I think you may be a little bit, uh, narrow-minded in suggesting North Marietta Street. If you're really looking for, uh, identity, uh, to honor, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King, uh, I would suggest reconsidering Long Avenue. And Long Avenue's a more prominent, uh, thoroughfare in the, in the city. Uh, it intersects with the interstate, so you have the opportunity to get signage on the interstate to recognize, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King. And, uh, I believe that the visibility would be there that, uh, some of the parties are looking for. So, uh, certainly, I appreciate you taking time to, uh, listen to my concerns, and I appreciate your efforts on behalf of the city. Thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you, uh, is that May, May Gibson? Mary Gibson. Okay, Miriam Gibson, yeah.
Hello, good evening, glad to be here. And I wanted to say I'm glad to be in Gastonia. I live in Mount Holly, and I'm relatively new to the area. And like him, I'm surprised that you don't have a freeway. And I agree with him, Long Avenue would be feasible. But to address the question of concern financially, we all suffering financially. I'm a single person, struggling at past, uh, how should I put it? Baby boomer age, okay? Think of it as, everything you do and for the fight and struggle that has incurred over the years has cost m- money, not only to blacks, 'cause I know some whites was as well, black and white, the struggle as they call, it costs. And anything you do, so if you wanna put a value on it, apples and oranges, you can't do that 'cause you're talking about a life that Dr. Martin Luther King, he gave his life not only for, like you said, the blacks, it was white, too, 'cause they were out there marching. I went to Selma, I was down there. So it wasn't just one-sided. Sure, and if you've been in the business somewhere for forty years, your constituents should know where you are. And if you got to pay that price, we all do. That's what we doing here, helping one another and keep it moving so we can all unite together. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Ms. Bar- Danielle Barber, please. There she is. We were talking about you, and you heard us.
Good evening. Thank you again, Mayor Bridgman and the entire council for this opportunity, once again, to express my thoughts as it relates to renaming a portion of Marietta Street to Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Way. Again, my name is Danielle Barber, and I'm asking you to help our city join the ranks of many other cities in North Carolina by declaring Marietta Street from Franklin Boulevard as Mari- as Martin Luther King, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Way. Gastonia is among the top thirteen cities in our state. And of those thirteen cities, seventy-five percent of them have a street named after Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. Choosing this stretch of Mar- of Marietta is extremely significant, not only to me, but to so many others, because for so many years, the railroad served as a divide in our community. The railroad tracks that run along Long Avenue, um, again, have served as a divide for our community. Therefore, by selecting this portion of the road as Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Way, it will serve as another bridge for our community to show forth, um, our unity and the strides of our leaders in making sure that we have progress in our community. I think it would be awesome, uh, to be able to ride down Franklin Boulevard and to be able to turn on to Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Way. And it would speak volumes to all who come into our community, not only who are visitors, but those, uh, who reside here. It would speak volumes as to what our city is really about as we continue to brand our community for the better. And I'd just like to say that, um, you know, I'm putting myself, I've, I've listened to the comments that have come forth, and as a director of an agency here in our community, um, I'm putting myself in their shoes and thinking about the cost burdening, uh, that they say they may, uh, incur. Um, but I know also that, you know, it takes just a little bit of time and sacrifice. Um, we, we're given, if, if this is voted upon, it's given enough time for that, for that process to be able to take place. Um, I, I don't know that the postal service is hiring any more new postal workers, so those who are here have been a part of the postal service for many years and, um, are well aware of the businesses that are located, um, in that area. As far as websites, you know, those are just requests that need to be made and can be changed in a matter of a few strokes. Um, so I'm just asking you all to, um, consider, uh, what would be best for everyone involved in making sure that here again, as we continue to bring about unity in our community and continue to brand our, uh, unity in our community and brand our city, um, and let's join the ranks of so many others who are already, uh, years ahead of what we have done. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Okay. Last one to sign up is, uh, Dr. Ed Sadler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reed, sir.
Members of this august group that we more commonly refer to as the Gastonia City Council, gives me a great deal of pride and pleasure to stand before you on this occasion. I grew up in this community, lived here all my life, worked in this community almost forty years, and have many of the same memories that Kenny Glenn, Jim Biggers, and a whole lot of these people who are sitting here, I think I lost you. A lot of these people who are sitting here this evening. You, and, uh, some of you heard when Kenny made reference to marching, and you might not have known the significance of what he was talking about. But the marches originated at Saint Stephen's Church, right down here on Marietta Street. And this was at a time when we had to cross the tracks, uh, and the, and what it actually meant during that time. You see, growing up, when I grew up, I didn't have many opportunities to venture across Long Avenue because that was a part of the divide that existed. Uh, most afternoons, I rode my bicycle right down here to the Gaston- Gastonia Gazette and picked up my newspapers and went back down Airline to Prior Street and down to Rankin. Now, there were houses between Airline and Rankin, but I didn't deliver papers there because there were people who lived in that area, and I could not deliver their newspapers. My paper route started there at Rankin, and it went from Rankin to what is now Priorhurst Park, which is right behind Highland. I didn't cross three twenty-one, another kid had, had the houses across three twenty-one. But we had the marches that occurred during that time, uh, in an effort to bring about some change in our community. I was aware because of friends and relatives who lived in other places of the difficulties that were experienced as people were going about the process of trying to bring about change. We didn't have the problems in Gastonia that a lot of people had. All of the fighting and the destruction that occurred. And that happened, or didn't happen, because of level-headed people from both sides of the community who made an effort to sit down and talk and discuss what was best for the community. Not what was best for individuals or what was best for businesses, but what was best for the community. And they did all of this in such a way, the Holiday Inn was right down there beside, uh, Sears and Mr. T. Jeffers. And this was before people were permitted to sit down to eat together. Mr. T. Jeffers, in the company of some Caucasian gentleman who were forthright in their thinking, went into the Holiday Inn one night, and Mr. Jeffers had dinner with the people that he was in the company of. Many of those names appear on this obelisk that's right here at the intersection of Marietta Street and Long Avenue. And, and I say this because people such as that were able to have those conversations and to make those steps, and we were able to have change occur in a peaceful manner here in Gastonia. And I think that we've kinda set, uh, the mark for a lot of other communities. I applaud your efforts to recognize someone that is of great significance to most people who have the hue of their skin that's similar to mine. People who, maybe not so much for the young people, and when I say young, I'll say those under, under thirty-five. But for those folks who were my age, uh, who, who, who are forty-five or more, it is of great significance. And I think it's important, and I, and I don't want to go back and try to, uh, just reiterate all that's been said, but I, I, I think that it's important to reemphasize what Kenny said about our history and being able to share with our children, um, where various things were in this community. You know, we had a thriving black business district in Gastonia. Now, we have a lot of black business owners today, but we don't have a thriving black business district like we did then. It is difficult to even talk about where it was because we can't always identify exactly where the properties were, but we're trying to do something about that also. But I applaud you for taking the leadership role and moving to give this consideration. And I know that everybody is not supportive of what we're talking about, but I believe that when all is said and done, and when we think about, oh, how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity, this will be an example of what has happened in this community and how you folks had the guts and were willing to demonstrate the leadership to move ahead with an initiative such as this. I thank you very much, and I see this light flashing, so I guess that means I'm supposed to sit down. But thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak, and thank you for giving this consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Sadler. Okay, yes, sir. Yes, it was. You're totally clear. Very good. Okay, um, the, um, that's, that's the, uh, sign-up sheet for the, yes, ma'am?
Uh, motion to close the public hearing.
I'm gonna ask for that, and you can be.
Second.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor, closing the vote. It's unanimous. It's unanimous. Jenny? Okay. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd just like to make a couple of comments out there. We're out of the public hearing. Believe it or not, I too own a business on North Marietta. That's where my business is located, 936 North Marietta Street. And when this was first proposed, and it was the first four blocks, I thought, well, that's easy enough to do, but there was the concern of the county over the expenses. And then 911 brought up that it was a little difficult to name only part of the street and leave the other part of the street, and 911 was one of the first to suggest just take it to the city limit. And I thought, well, you know, if it's easier for 911, then I thought, oh, wait a minute, that's going to affect my business. I've got to change business cards, websites. I'm a realtor. We have to change every agent in our office's license. We have to change everything with the commission, with the Realtors Association, on and on and on and on. So I sat down with my business partner, and her and I talked about it, and it's really not all that. We looked at the expense of business cards, the website. Website takes a phone call. The business cards, it's not going to take effect for a while anyway. That's not too bad. Now, that's not to say that it's not going to affect some of these small businesses along here. I don't know their individual costs. Theirs could be different from mine. I was hoping that maybe one of the business owners would bring forward an amount to compare it to. But being a small business owner, we have moved locations. When you move locations, you go through all those expenses again. Certainly, the two gentlemen that spoke, that have their businesses there, have a leg up on me, and the ones that their business have been there forty years. That's, you know, wonderful. I applaud them for staying in that area, even though that end of North Marietta has become depressed. They've stayed there, had a thriving business. But I don't know that their customers would get lost. I think their customers, after forty years, know where they are. So at the end of the day, I'm looking at it, and I say, the major objection for me would be the expense. We've eliminated the expense with the county. I don't know that there's a whole lot of expense for other small businesses. I've spoken to two others, actually three others, that told me they had no objection. It would be some expense to them. We've heard two here tonight that objected. But having heard all that, I've come to the conclusion that, you know, I forget the gentleman's name. He said, remember, at the end of the day, you were elected to protect the people. And I have to disagree with that. At the end of the day, I was elected to serve the people. If they need protection, that's fine, but part of service means listening and doing the will of the people. And I don't think renaming Marietta from Franklin to the city limits is going to be that harmful or expensive for any one business. So with that, I will go ahead and make the motion to rename North Marietta Street from Franklin to the city limits to Martin Luther King Junior Way. And in that, I would also, in that motion, I would also like to include that staff work with the county to rename their two driveways, North Marietta Street, to get their approval, get those street signs up as quickly as possible, so that the county does not incur any expenses. And that would be my motion.
I second that motion.
Discussion? Yes, sir.
Can I make a second motion to say that I would like to have it end at Walnut Street so it doesn't affect any of the businesses? And also to have the driveways renamed as North Marietta Street? Because I don't want to put undue burden on the Sheriff's Department, the courthouse, or Health and Human Services, and I don't want to put undue burden on anybody north of that. Matter of fact, from Walnut Street to Franklin, that's a pretty nice stretch of road. But when you start going north of there, it doesn't look that pretty. It's not, it's not that nice. I think the area that we're thinking of, right up to Marietta Street, is fine.
But Jim, you can't have from Walnut to the city limits as North Marietta and rename the private drive as North Marietta.
You can't have the two driveway, they're just driveways, just putting up a sign saying North Marietta.
But that would be going in two separate directions off of Martin Luther King Junior Way, which then turns into another North Marietta. So you, in a sense, would have three North Mariettas in different areas.
Yeah, but the thing is, if 911 gets a call and it's somebody at the courthouse needs assistance from EMS, and they have to say what street they're on, that's ridiculous. The person at 911 doesn't know where the courthouse is, they don't know where the sheriff's office is, they don't know where Health and Human Service Building is, there's a problem. I mean, you know, I'm sure the person's not going, I'm on North Marietta Street, you know where it's Martin Luther. I don't think there's going to be that type of confusion. The person's going to say, I'm at the courthouse. An EMS worker's going to say, it's at the courthouse. People know where that is. Everyone in Gaston County knows where it is. Having the driveways just named North Marietta is just allowing the county themselves not to have any printing costs involved. And that's why I think it's just beneficial that way. I don't want to, and these two, you know, owners of their shops that came up here took the time out, I think we should listen to what they have to say. And that's just two. I know of two others also that weren't too keen on it as well. So I think what our original intent was, from Franklin to Walnut, I like that. Now, can I make that a second motion?
Substitute.
Substitute motion?
Second.
Okay, the substitute motion to the original motion is to reduce it from, actually, it's the same motion except reducing it down to Walnut instead of the city limits.
Correct.
Bottom line.
That's what you originally.
Discussion.
So do we have to vote on that?
You vote on that first, the substitute motion first.
You vote on the substitute motion first. Well, is there, can we discuss that one?
Yes, sir.
All right. I have, I believe, I believe you were there. May I ask you this?
Sure.
And then, I'm sorry, I turned to you. I don't know the answer to this question I'm asking. Is the, was there not, was there not a representative at the county commission from 911 that made the statement that they would, in their studies appreciated if it would go to the city limits for their system as opposed to being, or did I make dream that?
I really, I know that they discussed it. I wasn't there when they were discussing. I heard, you know, I viewed it online, but I don't remember them saying, I know Chad had brought it up, but there again, if you say you're having, if someone's having a health issue at the sheriff's department, at the jail, EMS is going to know where that's at. You're not going to be fumbling around with what the street address is.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, yes, ma'am.
That was my understanding too, was, and here again, is the 911 person at the commissioner's meeting was the one that first brought up the 911 issue and said they were, they had been trying to consolidate and, because Long runs into another street, okay, and that it would be much easier in their training when new people come on and all those things, that if it went to the city limits, it would be much, much easier for 911. Now, I don't disagree with you, Councilman Gallagher, about anybody should know where the courthouse is. But I don't think that was the issue as much as they were trying to keep their mapping maybe altogether, going one way. And I know there had been some conversation that maybe if we did just a Walnut to start with, then eventually we could phase in to the city limits, okay? At the last meeting, council meeting, it wasn't a public hearing, but I think that there was some discussion about when, that, in fact, I think Dr. Sadler was the one that brought it up, said, well, if you're going to do it, why don't you just take it to the city limits, okay? And then that's when, I think, Councilman Pierceall said, well, he'd already had some business people saying, I'd love to be on Martin Luther King Junior Way. And I think that's when the attorney, correct me if I'm wrong.
I would advertise it for both of them.
For both of them. And that's how the conversation to the city limits got started. So then when we advertised, it's my understanding that the notices went out to everybody from Franklin Boulevard to the city limits, okay? So everybody on, that owned property got a notice of this public hearing tonight. Now, I don't know how many notices that was.
I don't know either, but the engineering staff did send the letters to the property owners, and that doesn't guarantee that every business got one because some would be tenants, but they did send to the property owners all the way to the city limits.
And of that many, okay, I, here again, I don't know how many that is either, but of that many people that got the notice of this public hearing, I hear from two, okay? I think that have property and businesses in that area. So if it were a big issue, I would have anticipated more people being here and exercising the democracy that we live in. I mean, that's, that's exactly why we have a public hearing, is that people can have the right to voice their opinion one way or the other, okay? And with all the people being notified on Marietta, you know, if they had an issue with it, okay, I would have thought they would have exercised their right to come at this meeting and express their feelings or their opinions. So that's what I would say.
Mr. Campbell.
I just wanted to comment a little bit briefly on the points that Councilman Pierceall made. And in fact, in my experience in formerly where I was employed, we had our own central dispatch system that we manned and supervised. Generally, you can have, when there is, because there are different reasons why streets change. And what generally happens there is when a new street comes up, there will be a read screen or something like that that comes up formerly known as, or if new businesses go on particular numbers that weren't normally there, there will be additional monikers which indicate next to such and such a business, which may be a landmark or turn at. So those things are generally, you can be put into a 911 system. So goes to your point, Councilman Pierceall.
Counselor Craig, by us only going from Franklin to Walnut Street, the only buildings it's affecting really is if we change the driveway names, it's going to take care of the county. It's going to, it'll be the Gastonia Conference Center, which we own, and that's not a big deal for us. And there's a bail bondsman there, there's a bakery, and there's a consignment shop. I'm trying to minimize us causing undue burden onto the, you know, just two of them showed up. That doesn't mean they're all in favor for not showing up. I just don't want to create undue burden on the citizens and sticking to what we first said, from Franklin to Walnut Street. This way, it causes no undue burden on anybody. That's all.
Dr. Craig.
I wanted a point of clarification with regard to whether or not these driveways renaming would be actually approved, or if there was a question of their approval.
They're our private drives, so the county will need to accept that, okay? We can't mandate that they do that, but if we want to offer them the opportunity to put up these signs and continue to call those addresses North Marietta Street, that would take the county's approval to do that.
And that would be the only approval that would be necessary?
Yes, sir, because they're private drives.
Okay. So I don't see that to be an issue. I do see the issue to be more of the broken street naming concept, meaning if it stops at Walnut and then it starts again, North Marietta, north of Walnut. Let me, let me offer this. You know, the only thing I've heard tonight so far, other than the inconvenience of the process that a business has to go through to change their address, is the cost involved, okay? To those businesses that are here tonight, if either of you gentlemen would like to come see me, if this should pass and your business name has to change, please come see me. I will be happy to help you with your financial burden.
Pretty good.
Okay, I'll be there in a moment. Let's go by just a second, Mr. Smith. And I was putting together what Councilman Gallagher said, what Councilman Pierceall said about the, he said it would take care of the situation, if, from Walnut, which was the original, it would take care of the situation by naming the driveways, let's say. But can it, I believe that's what you said, it can't really be Marietta, North Marietta, and North Marietta, can it?
That is certainly something for you all to decide tonight.
No, I ain't legal. I mean, I have two streets just like that, one this way and one here. I'm putting it together.
An example would be, I used to live on North Mooney, and if you go up North Mooney, it ends, and you have to take a right, another right, a left, and another left, and North Mooney continues. So, you know, it's just how it's divided. They're not exactly across the street from each other, but there are streets all over the city like that. You go across the street and you have to go down a block and continue on, so it's not, I'll be the first to admit, it is not the most perfect solution, but it's certainly one that's easily workable. We've had indication from the county that they are open to this, and all they have to do is vote and approve it. We put up a street sign, and they have no cost, so, you know.
Does that answer your question then, Mr. Mayor?
Well, it does. The substitute motion.
The substitute motion complicates things somewhat because you'd have three North Mariettas.
Yeah, you'd have.
Well, plus it would eliminate, in my opinion, it would eliminate the first part of the original motion, and that is of the staff going and sitting down and working that out with the county to name those streets. Because I just, I'm wondering if that's possible, so.
I think it complicates.
It's complicated.
I think it could be done, but it's complicated.
Okay. Well, let's, any other comments? We can vote on the substitute motion, which is Franklin to Walnut and, okay. All in favor of the motion? Please, wait a minute. Okay, there's two all opposed? Thank you very much. Now, we'll vote on the motion. The motion is to, as was advertised, as is in the resolution here, is to rename North Marietta Street from Franklin to the city limits, the city of Gastonia, renamed to Martin Luther King Junior Way. Now.
With the staff.
And of course, the second part of it is for this to further, one doesn't offset the other, it just, with the understanding that the staff will be meeting with the county staff to see if we can simplify it somewhat with the other, the two driveways. Okay, is, there's been a motion, and there's been a second. All in, any other discussion?
Your Honor, can you restate this motion? This is the, which motion is this now?
This is my motion, to rename North Marietta Street to Martin Luther King Junior Way. It will start at Franklin.
Okay.
And continue to the city limits.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And then, of course, instruction for staff to work with county to rename the two private drives North Marietta, so that it would not be expensed to the county.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, wait a minute. All in favor? Okay, opposed? Thank you very much.
I'm curious, Dr. Sadler seemed to have an objection perhaps, but.
I was just going to ask a question.
The public hearing was closed.
Or ask if what the sign is done, that is Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Way.
Correct.
Correct. We had that written in the.
It's on him.
Definitely, definitely.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, that's all right.
The motion passed while I was.
We're not going to take it. We're not going to take it.
It did.
Is it appropriate for us to approach you at this time?
Take a recess.
Let me say that, that, we're going to have to take a recess. I, I, let me just say, and, and the attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Sadler, but that there's, I don't want to get too excited too quickly, in this, all of us, those that, that would like to see this, because I think, of course, we have to want to get approval by the state, and, and which I certainly, you know, hasn't been a problem too much before, so, if the other cities, so.
We would be expressing appreciation to you for bringing this on.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, um, thank you, and I think.
Take a five minute.
Five minute recess, please. Bill Gray, we're coming up.
Yes, sir, please come on.
No, no, this is a reset. That's all, just to give everybody a break.
You know George.
Circus.
You know him?
Him?
Nah, he's not one of them.
Thank you for coming out.
George, I voted for you today.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Very generous and.
Good to see you. Thanks for coming out.
If you're losing sleep, right?
Fine, thank you.
We appreciate it.
Actually, it's watered down too.
That's all they'll let me have.
How you doing, Dave?
I'm good, Mr. Carroll.
You know, you put a different, you know, look on him, and of course, yeah, good to see you.
Hey, we're going to get about sixteen plates of barbecue on Friday for the office, so.
Very good, good to see you.
Yeah, we got a little warm in there.
I love it.
Good to see you. Thanks for coming out.
If you're losing sleep, right?
Thank you.
Fine, thank you.
We appreciate it.
It's, actually, it's watered down too.
That's all they'll let me have.
How you doing, Dave?
I'm good, Mr. Carroll.
You know, you put a different, you know, look on him, and of course, yeah, good to see you.
Hey, we're going to get about sixteen plates of barbecue on Friday for the office, so.
Very good, good to see you.
Yeah, we got a little warm in there.
I remember when Walt Melney, sometimes having trouble making their payments, he said, I'll, I'll pay them, and they started.
How did he do?
How did he do?
He said, don't let me ever talk to this group, yeah, I did.
Well, see, I, I, I said, you showed up.
Because you showed up.
Yeah.
You have any questions about tomorrow night?
About tomorrow night?
Those are those four proposals, in fact, I just got an email disseminated, he pulled out. He said.
Yeah, my question is, is.
No one wants to submit it. No one else submitted. Fourteen people went through. Now, remember, remember, this is where I, I turned it on, people may have chosen to wait and then come in as an upset. Yeah, so also the first guy might not get, might go to the second guy. See, so we're early.
But if, I mean, for instance, we could pick, we could pick a guy, maybe he's not the, the best author, but we pick him for another esoteric reason, the guy who has the money, he says, he's going to upset the bit, right?
It's a, it's a situation, a bit of a conundrum here, because the, when you're selling municipal property, yeah, we got to decide whether you lease purchase or, or sale. You know, Chris, if you're going on a manual, I do the tropics, in more, in a nice way. But there are numbers of it, so, so this is a conversation, Ash and Melissa are good at saying what's the value, throw the football, and they're saying that basically you can come up with what's the best value. Normally that's the dollar, but sometimes value is always, but, but can we quantify it, because I think it's a.
So that value could be.
Yeah.
Initial value.
How do we terminate as a, as a power?
You would have to.
Maybe with Friday night, I wouldn't matter. Just so you know, like, we ran around this.
It's real. It's interesting what you.
So it's whole, yeah.
What you do.
And when a new business comes up, another box comes down, and it says formerly Marietta, and all your.
So the numbers correspond.
When they move.
New, new.
And then the other thing to do is, the other thing that you put in, you know, and you put, there's another drop down that'll say landmark. Like, say you have a, our dealer, advanced life support, could come from anywhere in the county, so you could say, turn that first right past police. Uh, fourth driveway on that, all right? It's, it's easy to do. Now, again, I, I, I don't know how the county system works, but in general, it's, it's like, kind of like, it's a few keys. It's a family restaurant.
Yeah.
Another thing.
It's not a noose, it's an existence.
Exactly. And that's how that works. But, you know, that's how those, that's, again, that's how I learned it, I'm sure it's about the same way to that.
It's got to be.
You see, they're going to spend three hundred thousand dollars, should we do it?
You hear me, sir?
Yeah, look at that, they're going to spend three hundred.
Exactly right.
It's not that simple, but, you know, I think we have to again.
Josh.
As far as the.
Okay.
We do, we do, we do. I saw your letter up there, so.
You knew all the texts with that? I texted you, I said, I talked to you.
Somebody got a pillow back there.
There, let's move.
Let's move, boy, let's get it on.
Me too, it's freezing.
Let's look out there.
Yeah, we're spending a long, yeah.
That was, that was my one today.
It didn't do too bad. It wasn't going to go too bad.
Not all, no. Would, would you have had to give it to me?
Thank you. Okay.
I never had it before.
Okay, I'd like to thank everyone for our five minute recess. We're going to go now to item eleven, back on item ten just for a moment. The, I, I feel an obligation to make a, a couple, well, let's just say a couple corrections. I believe it was Dr. Chandler, and he left the minute he finished. The, I'd like for the minutes to read, to show that two comments he made are incorrect. Number one is, the comment went that we have increased our time serving. He read where we had increased, that is incorrect, and of course, it's decreased. And the other thing was, Jenny, that he said it, we spent the taxpayers' money on art space, which is an incorrect statement. So having said that, we'll move to item eleven now, okay? I mean, if he can say it, I can say it, just get, get it right. Yes, sir.
Chairman, if you've got anything to say, please, you might want to.
I don't like, I'm not speaking. I've been over there talking. Chris, we're talking about you. It's good to have you. You, he did come in earlier, and it's good to have you here.
For those that are watching and may not know what we were talking about, it's Chris Thomason.
Chris Thomason is the president of Gastonia Chapter of the NAACP. Public hearing, item eleven, is a Gastonia Transit Fare Increase. Michael Peoples, there he is, I was looking for you. Michael Peoples, Peoples, Director of Enterprise Services. Michael?
Mayor, Council. Good evening. I'm filling in for Ms. Key. She is taking a well-deserved vacation tonight. December eighth, Transportation Committee met unanimously, recommended to you a fare increase in the transit schedule, proposed to be effective July first, two thousand fifteen. In front of you and your package, you'll see the current fares and then the proposed fares, for the regular bus fares being the, the most used, that's a twenty-five cent increase. We did have a share of public meetings on different occasions, and really, there were no events made. Attendance really was, was low, so also accepted comments at the station itself and received no comments. So we're proposing this to you, or recommending this to you for action, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Peoples? Yes?
I, I don't have a question. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Peoples, and of course, in our agenda, we have all these increases. I trust what the, the work that the Transportation Committee and the staff did.
This is a public hearing, if there is anybody signed up, we should hear from anybody signed up.
But I, I, if it's necessary, then I'd say go for it.
Okay, first, yeah, sure.
Just one question, are we going to advertise on the buses themselves, alerting the passengers to the fact, one, that we're going to increase the fares, and two, that they can buy these ten-ride passes at a discount?
Absolutely, if it's not advertised already at the station, certainly, and then on the buses themselves, yes, we can absolutely do that.
Thank you, Michael.
Any other questions, Mr. Peoples? Okay, let me, if, and I'm sorry, I jumped ahead of myself here, we did have one person sign up, the Mr. Alan Petty, that would like to speak regarding this particular item. Mr. Petty?
Alan Petty of Gastonia. First come in here, I felt like I'm out of order, should bow. I've never been before, a group of people like this sitting at the big desk. Instead of bowing, though, I will give an advisory. I don't hear, my hearing is below average. Some of it I can attribute to age, but the most of it I have to attribute to years of practice and not listening to my mother or my wife. But the largest group of people that'll be affected by any raise in the price of fares are the ones who depend on the six-bus, eight-route operation. My remarks will be all directed just for that part of the transit. All my statements are based on information obtained through Transit's annual reports, the use of the two thousand and fourteen system map and rider guide, and information also provided graciously by Fleet Services. The council has been given copies of the fullness of my statements, I will now highlight only the essence of it. There hasn't been an increase in the price of fares since April two thousand and five. It is more than just long overdue. A fare increase without a corresponding reduction of the operational costs should be insensible to the council. The fare increase of twenty-five cent on full and ten cent on half fare is approved by the Transportation Committee, and now before you cancel, falls way short of being any real discernible increase to the portion of operational costs paid by the bus users. Two thousand and seven through two thousand and fourteen, the portion of operational costs recouped through reported fares have remained in the ten percent range, never exceeding ten percent. Had the increases approved by the committee been implemented by two thousand and fourteen, the portion of operational costs paid in fare would have only been ten point four three percent. Over the past eight years, the average cost of each passenger's trip in Gastonia was seven dollars and sixty cents, with the taxpayers covering over ninety percent of it. Two thousand and fourteen's cost to the taxpayer for each passenger's trip was six twenty-five. That six dollar and twenty-five cent is not per person, as per every trip that person takes. A person rides a bus four times a day, which is most common, it costs the taxpayer twenty-five dollars to accommodate that person. If the buses ran full capacity on each and every trip for the year, and the breakdown of riders was, as we reported for two thousand and fourteen, the portion of operational costs collected in fare would only be twenty-four percent. The buses are a long way from ever being full capacity. Two thousand and fourteen's reported passenger trips require an average of just over eleven passengers per bus trip, about one-third bus capacity. I will close with a question to the council, and I include the mayor too, which may be acknowledged by showing hands. How many of you have ridden at least two of Gastonia's buses in the past six months? Any questions to Mr. Peoples? Yes?
I, I don't have a question. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Peoples, and of course, in our, uh, agenda, we have all these increases. I trust what the, the work that the Transportation Committee and the staff did.
This is a public hearing. If there is anybody signed up, we should hear from anybody signed up.
But, um, I, I, if it's necessary, then I'd say go for it.
Okay, um, first, yeah, sure.
Just one question. Are we gonna advertise on the buses themselves, alerting the passengers to the fact, one, that we're gonna increase the fares, and, two, that they can buy, uh, these ten-ride passes at a discount?
Absolutely. If it's not advertised already at the station, certainly, and then on the buses themselves, yes, we can absolutely do that.
Thank you, Michael.
Any other questions of, uh, Mr. Peoples? Okay, let me, if, and I'm sorry, I jumped ahead of myself here. We did have, uh, one person sign up, the Mr. Alan Petty that would like to speak regarding this, uh, particular item. Mr. Petty?
Alan Petty of, uh, Gastonia. First come in here, I felt like I'm out of order. I've never been before, a group of people like this sitting at the big desk. Instead of bowing, though, I will give an advisory. I don't hear, my hearing is below average. Some of it I can attribute to age, but, uh, the most of it I have to attribute to years of practice and not listening to my mother or my wife. The, uh, largest group of people that'll be affected by any raise in the, uh, price of fares are the ones who depend on the, uh, six-bus, eight-route operation. My remarks will be all directed just for that part of transit. All my statements are based on information obtained through Transit's annual reports, uh, the use of the two thousand fourteen, uh, system map and rider guide, and information also provided graciously by Fleet Services. Now, the council has, uh, been given copies of the fullness of my statements. I will now highlight only, uh, the essence of it. There hasn't been an increase in the price of fares since April two thousand five. It is more than just long overdue. A fare increase without a corresponding reduction of the operational costs should be unceivable to the council. The fare increase of twenty-five cent on full and ten cent on half fares approved by the Transportation Committee, and now before you cancel, uh, falls way short of being any real discernible increase to the portion of operational costs paid by the bus users. Two thousand seven through two thousand fourteen, the portion of operational costs recouped through the reported fares have remained in the ten percent range, never exceeding ten percent. Had the increases approved by the committee been implemented by two thousand fourteen, the portion of operational costs paid in fare would have only been ten point four-three percent. Over the past eight years, the average cost of each passenger's trip in Gastonia was seven dollars and sixty cents, with the taxpayers covering over ninety percent of it. Two thousand fourteen's cost to the taxpayer for each passenger's trip was six twenty-five. That six dollar and twenty-five cent is not per person, as per every trip that person takes. If a person rides a bus four times a day, which is most common, it costs the taxpayer twenty-five dollars to accommodate that person. If the buses ran full capacity on each and every trip for the year and the breakdown of riders was as we reported for two thousand fourteen, the portion of operational costs collected in fare would only be twenty-four percent. The buses are a long way from ever being full capacity. Two thousand fourteen's reported passenger trips require an average of just over eleven passengers per bus trip, about one-third bus capacity. I will close with a question to the council, and I include the mayor too, which may be acknowledged by showing hands. How many of you have ridden at least two of Gastonia's buses in the past six months? I got some people that did some bus riding. I'll thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I've been spending most of my own time just working with the city. Go ahead.
Public transportation is always, uh, a questionable thing. It does. It's pretty much covered by tax dollars. It's, it's never gonna be self-sufficient. It's never gonna make money. I think we all know that, but, you know, it's, 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 it's a question of, of need. Well, I take that back. It's not a question of need. There is, there is definitely a need there, but a question of cost versus need, and how much you spend, or how many people. And, um, I'm not questioning public transportation. That, that's not the purpose of my statement, but I know that even members on this council have brought up things during budget planning. You know, could we have a smaller bus? Could we switch the type of fuel we use, that kind of stuff? And I, I just, Ed, I know you and the staff look at these things when, especially when budget's rolling around to see where you can cut costs and save money. And I, I would just say, you know, looking at a report like this with these type of numbers and kind of drives it home how much the system is subsidized, that, uh, that I would encourage, uh, you and the staff to continue to look for ways. You know, Gastonia maybe one day could be a model of, uh, public transportation savings, so. Just, just kind of a comment on that, that we kind of know.
Go ahead.
Our brainwaves could just... Your, your point is very well-taken, Councilman Pierceall. In the interest of brevity for this meeting, because we had to conjoin the, uh, the last meeting, which was canceled, and this one, um, you won't be getting your transportation report from our committee until the next meeting. However, to your point and the concerns of this council and this body, um, part of what we additionally have mandated is, and first time in, Ed, and I'm gonna rely more on you, it's quite a number of years that we're gonna, we have an outside, we have money set aside for an outside consultant to come in and to study all facets of the bus operation to see where we can be more efficient. And I say that because sometimes, and, and with all the respect, our, our staff does a tremendous job, sometimes also when we can have another set of eyes outside of the box, so to speak, they may see some things, or there may be some things in other cities that we're not aware of that may fit here, okay? So, uh, this is, um, more or less a multi-pronged approach to go ahead and, um, make it more fiscally viable for our city and all of our taxpayers, but also to see if we can make it more efficient, okay? And, and so that's the other side of this, if you will, that we're, you're gonna get more reports on. And, and Ed, I believe that we have the RFQ done for the, uh, what we're gonna be putting out to get, um, bids from consultants, and specifically, we wanna look at our size or larger and different, you know, with experience in different cities is what we're trying for, for RFQs.
The committee directed the staff to look at it very comprehensively, and, uh, to look at not only the traditional way we provide, uh, mass transportation, but to look at it and what all kinds of options might be there. Also, to take a look and see if there's any possibility of working with the county, and, and, and we're going to explore that too. So, that'll be presented to you at the next city council meeting with the Transportation Committee.
And I, I just will follow, just will close Ed's comments with, there's a number of other things that were part of this discussion that we can go ahead, and I know, wanted to drag out this whole meeting into the next Transportation Committee, but we are also looking at the size of bus versus ridership. And additionally, I've just, as of, uh, what, four days ago, I had a discussion with the hospital, who's one of their, their employees or one of, comprise some of the largest areas of our ridership, to see if our trip times, um, and the number of employees that they have, uh, working at the hospital are conducive to each other. Can that be modified, and can, would that result in a, in a rise in ridership? So that, and, and that's gonna be probably within a month, Ed. They're gonna get back to you with those numbers. Thank you.
I'd, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing and also approve the recommendation by staff.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you very much. Item twelve is a, uh, a request to dedicate the Catawba Avon Creek Greenway as a Gotha Thuringian, he's gonna show me how to say it, Thuringian Greenway, Mr. Bill Gray, Chairman of the Sister Cities Board of Directors. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Reed.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Bill Gray. I am currently, uh, serving as Chairman of the Sister City, uh, Gastonia, of which we're all very proud of. I want to start by reading you a letter we sent to you, Mr. Mayor. It kind of gets into exactly what we're trying to do, and then I'll answer any questions and ask some comments, if you would. Mayor Bridgman, City Council members. Gastonia Sister City, Gotha Germany, has honored us with naming of a new street named Gastonia Street. As a reciprocal gesture, we have been encouraged to name a Gastonia Street for Gotha. The Gastonia Sister Cities Board of Directors met on Tuesday, February ninth, and discussed naming options to present to the Gastonia City Council. The board would like to propose dedicating the Catawba Avon Creek Greenway as the Gotha Thuringian Greenway to be celebrated as a mutually appropriate time when a German Sister Cities delegates would come to Gastonia. And by the way, we owe them a visit here. We've been there several times recently. Gotha is located in the state of Thuringian, which is described as Germany's green heart. Our own greenway could be described as our own green heart. Signage would be placed at the Limburger Park or Garrison Boulevard entrance to the Greenway, sharing our mutual green hearts and our mutual love for nature, healthy recreation, and open space. There would be an opportunity along the trail to place attractive natural signage to describe flora and fauna in both German and English, or share phrases of poetry. A resting place or bench could be shared by Mayor Bridgman and Mayor Kooch to show mutual respect and friendship during the inaugural walk. During the dedication, local classroom children could sing a German song or plant a lilac tree or edelweiss. For mapping and other planning and public works needs, the Greenway would remain the Avon Catawba Creek Greenway. Gastonia Sister Cities would consider having T-shirts printed that promote the dedication with the saying "Gotha," pronounced "Go to the Greenway." The Gastonia Sister Cities Board respectfully requests the City Council to approve the dedication of the section of the Greenway stretching from Limburger Park to Robinwood Road, the Gotha Greenway, uh, signed by myself. Just a, a couple of comments that I, I'd like to take this opportunity to promote the Sister City program that we have in Gastonia. My children certainly benefited from it. They were some of the first to visit Germany, but I have seen many, many children that have affected their lives positively, both on this side of the Atlantic and the others. It's a great program. And one thing I would say to you that has come to light recently is, is that in Germany, when great Sister City programs are put before the German people, Gotha and Gastonia is right in there with the Sister Cities that are shared with Munich, Berlin, uh, and all the major cities, uh, in Germany. It is a marvelous success for them, and I think a marvelous success for us. So, I ask you to consider this proposal, and, uh, thank you for your time.
Questions to Mr. Gray? Yes?
I'm sure that Gotha has a city seal, city emblem. That, that would be nice to, you know, put on some of the signage, so people recognize what that is.
We could incorporate that.
Question?
Would you like to have a motion?
Yes, sir.
I so moved that, that request be approved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Thank you very much. Should we raise our stein?
Y'all come back, sis. Okay, item thirteen is a resolution authorizing condemnation proceedings. New Hope Road, uh, general obligation bond widening. Presentation, Mr. Rusty Boss, Director of Engineer and City Engineer. Rusty?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Item thirteen.
Little formality out of the way, if it pleases the council. The first thing we'd like to do is, is on the list that's presented in your agenda package is to remove two of the parcels. We've managed to get some signatures and settle those out since the time of the printing of the agenda. The O'Neill parcel, O'Neill, Cheryl Klein, Cecily Klein, Cheryl, Linda McSlane, and, uh, Robin Anita Sherrill. This is the fourth one down. It's parcel number one-one-seven-five-nine-six. They have, uh, signed the necessary documents, and we've acquired that right away. Also, the Western Auto Supply Company, this is the third one from the bottom. It's parcel ID number one-one-seven-four-six-seven. Uh, that one's also been acquired. So, those have been removed from the...
And, Mr. Boss, if I can interrupt you. While we're looking at that list of names, I just want to clarify for the record on behalf of the mayor, that Nan Towers LLC is an entity that is owned by the mayor and his wife, and, um, the Assistant City Attorney and I have both advised him that he can't settle his case, because as mayor, he can't make a contract with the city. So, we're in the unique position of having to sue the mayor, unfortunately, in order to avoid the criminal statute about contracts with the city. So, we will have to file the condemnation action against Nan Towers LLC to make sure that John Bridgman stays out of jail, for now, so.
Well, now, you understand, Ed, it is, it's the correct statement that if you accept my assets, you accept my, my ability. Now, Nan and I have owned that for twenty-two years, and that's changed the LLC seven, eight years ago, but I will recuse myself in this room. Do you take over?
The project for the New Hope widening, um, project is widening, uh, the road from Burtonwood to Garrison from four to five lanes. Construction plans are, are basically complete. All, all that lacks right now is any changes that come out of the right-of-way negotiations, uh, and the plans will be ready to go. So, we're, we're very, very close. Uh, in September of two thousand thirteen, it's over a year ago, we began the process of talking with the property owners and, and trying to acquire the right-of-ways. It involved twenty-six different property owners. Since that time, um, we've, we've acquired several, but there, there are still a, a number that are remaining, that are shown in your agenda item. The project is federally funded. Uh, due to this, we can't use the standard city process of, of getting appraisals and fair market value and just negotiating out. We have to adhere to the Federal Uniform Relocation Act, which requires a whole lot more documentation, a lot more review of the appraisals, approvals from DOT of the offerings and the appraisals. Because of this, we, we hired our, we asked our consultant that was designing the road to also help us with the, the right-of-way acquisition and to keep us in line with all the documentation that's required. So, uh, HDR, a member from HDR staff is with us here tonight to help and answer any questions about the road design or, or any of the, the issues that they came into with the acquisitions. We've contacted the property owners. They're all aware of where we're at. Like any other acquisition, uh, we will continue to negotiate with those property owners. We expect that there are several that are on the border of, of signing. Uh, we're just trying to work out a few of the mechanics and a few of the details, and we should be able to close them out. We expect that there are gonna be a handful that, that may be a little bit more of a struggle, and we may have to go a little further with them before we finalize negotiations with them. We'll continue those processes. Staff recommends approval of the resolution authorizing condemnation for these, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, sir. Mr. Campbell, Mr. Gallagher?
Rusty, I question, um, if you need to get back to me at a later time on this. This was something that was posed by one of the business owners, specifically Advance Auto, which is, I believe is, uh, well, it's Western Auto Trading, is Advance Auto. Are they gonna be able to, this was from the, at the store level, the manager. Are they gonna be able to retain all of their driveways? Obviously, they would be modified, but they would still be there.
I believe so, but we'll, we'll double-check with the plans and get with them and answer that question directly to them.
Thank you. Again, that's not a rush on that. That was just something that came up recently. Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Rusty, there's quite a, quite a many of these people on here besides the mayor. I mean, there's about ten or so. I mean, what is the, the big gist of the problem? Why aren't these people signing off?
It's, it's, it's interesting. It's all a lot of very particular reasons to their particular cases. The, the Watsons, it's more of a monetary issue, um, on, on one side. You know, on the other side, there was a, an issue that we were able to work out with Gaston Medical Building and the Girl Scout Building, and, and a partnership essentially. So, for them, it's more the time involved to get to that resolution, and now finalizing the mechanics of that, getting the, the documents recorded, getting everybody to sign all the documentation. Right across the street, the, the Bank of America Building, that's actually owned by a different company, and Bank of America and the landlord or the, the owner of that property are kind of figuring, trying to figure out exactly what the split of the proceeds from the sale is. And, you know, large industries have lots of attorneys that like to cross every T and dot every I, so things take a little more time. But, but, so, there's no one thing. It's a lot of very individual positions, just where property owners find themselves.
It's not because of the driveway, or the sidewalk, or the streets encroaching, or...
We've, we've made a tremendous amount of effort with the people out there to, to, to understand the impact that road construction has on their businesses and to accommodate that and mitigate that. A, a lot of work has been done, um, with some restrictions on the construction plans to keep the contractor from getting too far down the road with one thing and, and closing up all the driveways at once or any of that. So, I, I think we've handled a lot of that, those types of issues. I think it's just, uh, a lot of the property owners just have their own specific needs that they find themselves in.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Okay, Rusty, I'm gonna grill you a little harder than that.
I, I might call the ringer in.
No, you're fine. Hey, I, I've always said, I, obviously, you have to condemn property sometimes for progress like rose, but if there's one thing that gives me the most burden as elected official, it's condemning someone's property. That just, I just can't live with it. Having said that, okay, we've got a list here. These are the property owners that are holding out, correct?
Yes.
Go down and tell me which ones look favorable. Like, they're, they're probably gonna do it. It's just, like you were saying, Bank of America. They're probably gonna do it. They're just squirming about something. Tell me which ones are holding out. They're not gonna sign. They don't wanna have anything to do with this.
Well, the, the mayor's clearly gonna go for it.
Well...
It's just how that's gonna be.
That Nan Towers.
I, um, there, there is one other set that is a very complex situation where there are multiple property owners and multiple rights associated with a building. That one's gonna go to condemnation, and that's mostly because of the, the complexity of the issue. We just, there is no simple solution that everybody can agree on. That's parcel number, make sure I get this right, seventeen-five-ninety-one and seventeen-five-eight-eight. The two of those, that's right at, right to the, to the left of, on the map on your screen. I put this up on the Elmo real quick.
Right in the middle.
That is, if this, this is Cotton Blossom and Country Club, that's these two parcels. And that's not because any of the property owners don't oppose the project. It's just the, the way that their, their tenant agreements are, or their ownership agreements are.
Just complicated.
Terribly complicated.
Okay, I get that, and that's fine.
You know, you, um, again, um, the McLean Funeral Home further to the west, uh, there, it's a discrepancy about money. The, the appraised value comes in at a certain amount. That's what we offer. The owner feels that it's worth more than that. So, you get into the offer, counteroffer, counteroffer, counteroffer.
How, how much is it gonna take? We, we may need your, how, how, how much are we gonna take of the McLean?
We actually just made a counteroffer, and honestly, we feel like with this last counteroffer, we're probably at the last night we can discuss with the process of everything.
Geographically, how much were we gonna take? I think that was the question. Not how much money is it gonna take?
Yeah.
In terms of strategy, I don't know that we wanna start getting into dollar figures here tonight.
No.
But, um, how much, how much physical property are we gonna take?
I think it's just a sidewalk, isn't it?
It is, and that's the thing. A lot of this right-of-way is not a lot. A lot of it is temporary construction easement, so it's really just acquiring that easement for the contractor to come out and do the work that they need to do. So, really, none of it is really a huge amount. It's really to, to... So, really, none of it is really a huge amount, it's really to, to, to acquire the right-of-way. So, for the McLean property, the area that we're taking is point zero-eight-eight, that's the right-of-way, the permanent right-of-way that we're acquiring, and then point zero-nine to break construction easement, we also have some other utility easement and permanent drainage easements, we're talking very small amounts.
Because there are already, there are already five lanes there, and so you're really not widening it. I think there's a sidewalk and some slope and construction a little bit, so it's just very, they're really teeny slivers.
And again, everything that we do to really get to that, we have to justify, there has to be justification, there has to be documentation, and so, again, we've made a counteroffer June had this week, and we have coordinated with them very closely, and we feel like this is really the last amount we can have the justification for it. And I just want to say, too, this, we have not taken this lightly, I mean, the condemnation, we understand the city's position on this, and so, we have tried very hard to negotiate. There are a couple of these we do think that we probably are going to be able to finalize, and we're very, very close, we just wanted to present the whole list to you at one time, and we will continue negotiating with it.
Is, is McLean, is that brick wall coming down?
No, no.
He does have a little retaining wall on his driveway, he does have, he has some concerns with that, he's had a lot of concerns about his access during construction, and we have just done everything we can to limit how much they're gonna be impacted. They have, the contractor has to maintain access, that is in the NCOT standards, access has to be maintained at all times, and I, and I think a lot of the property owners, too, also, I mean, there's gonna be construction, it's not gonna be easy to say, but it's gonna be maintained, you know, it's, it's not gonna probably be sad, it's a long thing. He in general, just, he has a lot of heartburn, you know, I, he's just been very difficult to negotiate with, but we really have tried very hard to reach out, so, again, we've made another counteroffer this week.
Okay. Yes, sir. Mr. Kim.
Rusty, madam, something that, I, I did make a, a site visit out in the area by the McLean, and something that we need to get on the table, that we need to make sure that we address, is the access with regard to the percentage of grade, because as we take more of the roadway for the construction, which I understand, and especially the temporary construction, what's gonna happen there, typically, they have longer low vehicles that are predominant in a funeral procession, and we want to make sure that we can't that going into that driveway so that the vehicles are not bottoming out or doing something called high centering, where, actually having the President Obama's limousine in some country where the middle got stuck, the wheels were off the ground, and just, just a nightmare. So, in addition to the, you know, we want to make sure that we nail that, and I think if you make a trip by there, you'll see what I mean. Thank you.
Right, right, and you're right, that existing grade is pretty steep as it is.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, Brenda, you're, you're in charge. The mayor recused himself.
Well, I'm, I was sitting over there, I do have a question.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
How, once we get this settled, this group settled?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then, and we start construction, now, are we saying construction's gonna be finished by January twenty-sixteen?
No.
It says wrapped up, what's that mean?
Well, really, what needs to happen, there's some utilities need to be relocated, we can't relocate utilities until all the right-of-ways are acquired and all the necessary utilities. Really, we need nine months to relocate the utilities. So, as soon as all right-of-ways acquired and the condemnations are finalized, that's when we can begin the utility relocation, which will take nine months. And then, really, that's the last piece that needs to happen, and once utilities are relocated, then it's gonna be let, and it is gonna be let by NCDOT to go after construction, and they need a three-month period. So, right now, it's gonna be let in April of twenty-sixteen, that's the let date, and then we're assuming a two-year construction period.
Two-year, okay.
And...
After utilities has been taken care of.
And after the contract's awarded.
Right, right.
I mean, it will take some time to get to that process.
Yeah.
So, we're really not, I mean, we're really not thinking about this being complete until sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen?
Probably twenty.
The latter part of twenty-eighteen?
Well, it's gonna be let in April of twenty-sixteen, so, so it's April of twenty-sixteen, and then it would probably be a two-year.
What has really been difficult with these projects, there are a lot of utilities that have to be relocated, they're not all ours, so we have to wait until those other utility companies actually move them, and it has resulted in these projects being extended way beyond what we had originally thought. And so, again, you know, you're getting good estimates here, and that seems like a reasonable time, but if all of a sudden, one of the utility companies drags their feet, then that, the whole project slows.
Well, that's what happened at Myrtle School.
Sure, you see, they're not even...
That's why we're...
And that, and you are, you're aligned with that party.
Does the state not have a big stick that they can swing around?
If they have a...
They have this problem, too.
Yeah, no, they're not, we're... And you can see how slow even Myrtle School's going.
Right.
One, I think, I thought, I saw the last report, we're one percent finished or something like that. I mean, they, they have not really mobilized and haven't done, so these projects have taken an extraordinarily, extraordinarily long time, very frustrating. And, and it does come when you start widening state highways, where you've got all these businesses, and you're using federal funds, and the federal funds are written in such a way to protect property owners and relocation rights and everything else, and dotted I's, crossed T's, and you've got all these independent, but the independent utility companies really complicate this, these issues, too.
All right, that was my question. So, now, has there been a motion made? Okay, is, are we ready to have a motion made on this request and recommendation by city staff of adopting a resolution authorizing condemnation proceedings against the reference properties to acquire the necessary rights of way and easements for the property?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Discussion, madam.
And Rusty, this would, just to, for, for the record, this would be subject to modification as we are able to move forward with agreements with the aforementioned listed properties, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The second, is there any discussion, other than, that was it? Okay, are we ready to vote? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Just, I hate condemnation. I, it passed, everybody's happy, but it's just...
Motion passed.
...condemnation.
I turn the meeting back over to your honor mayor.
Thank you, Brenda. Okay. That's, hmm.
He's still there.
Yeah.
Ordinance amending Chapter fourteen Utilities with the Code of Ordinance of the City of Gastonia Stormwater, presentation, Rusty.
Mayor, members of council. Staff recently performed a review of our stormwater ordinance, we were basically looking for stuff that is maybe exceedingly burdensome on the development community or businesses wanting to start up, looking for things that weren't functioning properly or things where we might have been out of line with, with most practices of other cities, such as us across the state. During that review, we found two items. The first one is the, the threshold of impervious surfaces that are required before stormwater basins are implemented. Currently, our threshold is at ten thousand square feet of new impervious, most every other municipality that we surveyed, with the exception of Cary, North Carolina, was at twenty thousand square feet. So, one of our recommendations is to increase that to twenty thousand square feet, be in line with, with most other places. The other thing that we found was what we call, what we refer to as the fifty-fifty rule, this is more about redevelopment of, of existing properties. Essentially, it says that if you develop less than fifty percent of a property, you don't have to add new stormwater detention to it. If you develop more than fifty percent, you have to bring the entire site into compliance. What we found is that essentially, this is acting as a disincentive to entire-site comprehensive redevelopment, bringing the entire site up to existing code standards, or zoning code standards. So, our recommendation is essentially to do away with that requirement and, and just let all these sites redevelop, kind of grandfathered in, and bring them all up to existing zoning standards. Pretty simplistic presentation, you've seen the, the ordinance attached to it, pretty lengthy ordinance, goes, touches many, many places, but I'll be glad to answer any questions you have, and again, staff recommends the adoption of this, this ordinance amendment.
Yes, sir. Chris Solomon, Mr. Gray.
Rusty, I just want to thank you and the staff for going back and looking at items like this, I know the building community is appreciative, and you guys have been working with the building task force that I put together some time ago, they've said many wonderful things that, and, and it's just good to see that, that the government, we're working with the, the private sector to, to move forward for the betterment of everybody, so I just, number one, I want to say thank you, I've been hearing good things, and then, number two, I will make the motion to approve this.
That, that basically is what, this is much more business-friendly, and I think it sends a strong message, we've been talking about business-friendly for a while now, now we're, it's not talk, action, these actions are speaking louder than those words, and I hope that, and I applaud the, the staff for doing that, and I hope that this type of working together with the business community continues, and, and the, the message will get there, that this is not just a short-term attitude, this is a long-term attitude for, for business growth in, in Gastonia and Gaston County, so I applaud you at the same time for doing that.
Thank you.
Did you second that, Mike?
I did.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any more questions, discussion? All in favor? Okay. It's approved, and you still there?
I'm not going away.
Budget amendment, physically fifteen, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to transfer additional funding to general fund capital projects to provide funding for street resurfacing, sir.
Very quick, simple, this was just in response to the, the motion that was made and carried at the council work session to allocate seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to street resurfacing out of the current district's budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Was this a filibuster?
Yes, absolutely.
And that's why I'm leading.
Item sixteen is Recreation Advisory Commission Meeting Report Presentation, Councilman David Curlin, Chairman, and Exhibit sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the RAC met on Tuesday, February tenth, had a few items that we discussed, and one we voted on, I'm gonna go quickly through these for the sake of time, you've got this in your agenda, but just to summarize, and the first one, Park Project Updates, tennis courts, the Ashbrook Courts are finished, I believe the tennis team should be already on those courts this time, Ferguson and Phillips Courts are supposed to be getting back underway in mid-March with completion late in the spring. The downtown ballpark conversations continue between Mr. Jesse Cole, YMCA management, Gaston Chamber, sort of a local business individual, some of you have been privy to some of these conversations, as you know, these are all towards the ultimate goal of trying to establish a downtown ballpark somewhere in the area of the current YMCA site. Those will be ongoing for quite some time. There were also some discussions briefly about potential renovations and upgrades to Sims Park, too. Lineberger, Lineberger Park, Greenway, as you're aware, the Matthews Belt Cannon Foundation gave us a generous donation of three-hundred-thousand dollars, and at this point, city staff has been in the process of doing a, a design for additional parking on the east side of Garrison, across from the Greenway entrance there, with additional forty-three parking spaces, as well as an educational rain garden for stormwater detention, some exercise equipment, some open space, possibly some benches, possibly some art sculpture, and this actually is to be started sometime late spring and finished this year. And then, as you're also aware, the Skeet and Trap Range was also discussed briefly to bring up to date the RAC members, as we have continued that process to look for property. So, I'm gonna let, since Mr. Dellinger was so kind to come to this meeting this evening, I'm gonna let him take on number two, because they put a lot of work into the next issue for which we do have a vote.
Thank you, Dr. Curlin, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As, as you know, when you became, came on council in May of two thousand twelve, we wrote before you a fee schedule, policy change that was approved at that particular time, and it had been since two thousand five, since we had changed anything. We looked at it then to say that every two to three years, we would come back, we would continue to look at things, but every two to three years, do an, do an assessment, and then bring it back, back to you after performing that assessment. And by performing that assessment, we took into consideration our, our local market rates for like services charged by similar cities our size, the demand for specific services, increased cost of, of providing services, increased staff costs, and increased material goods for providing services, and even costs associated with our credit card fees, which we now have implemented and use those, plus our future online payments and registrations. The proposed fee schedule we have before you today in draft form, we would like to initiate that for May first of twenty-fifteen, and our schedule runs, that, that's the beginning of our spring, it takes into consideration our pools, most of our spring sports, most of our heavy rentals, so that, that's basically our season versus our physical, physical year. Highlights in this proposal are, we did have an addition of non-refundable administration fee for facility reservations, shelter rentals, and team registrations, individual program fees, those run anywhere from five to fifteen dollars to a maximum of twenty-five, depending on, on what they're doing, but we, we have to have some way of getting that back, we, we have many numerous times where we will give a total refund, and not only is the city writing a check for that refund, but we've, we've done a whole lot of things that, with our staff time, that we have our skin in the game, and then, in return, returning the whole thing. So, it's just the way, the business way, and it's the way other departments and other folks in our business work as well. Establishes set, set fees for pool rentals and adds an additional fee for non-city residents, our fees before had no provision for an extra charge for non-city residents. It adjusts fees for facility rentals, as I said, for encouraged staff fees and operational increases for a better cost recovery, adds a cancellation policy for shelter and building rentals that we have not had before, and incorporates Skeet and Trap Range fees as part of this policy. We haven't, it hasn't been part of this policy, we've always brought that in as, as a separate, and we felt like that it needed to be. If we're gonna have a fee and, and charges scheduled, then if we're gonna look at it every couple of years, we need to objectively look at everything and it need to be included. And those fees were adjusted for definitely our rising cost and our, our staff is one thing, but our rising cost and our targets, since two thousand eight, targets have gone up about two, two dollars and thirty-some cents per case, which our costs have increased, too. And those prices, we don't go up, it's, I think it was the nineties before we went up in early two thou, early two thousand eight, I think, and then it's, I think we haven't gone up since, so, two thousand nine, so, we're, we're actually putting that into place now. Hit the highlights, I didn't know that our new process was able to put things in color like this, and all the changes are definitely highlighted for, highlighted for you to see, couldn't get anything passed with that yellow sticking out, I have to remember to do gray next time, but just shade it, but if there's any questions, be glad, be glad to answer it, or get any comments.
Questions?
Chuck, one question is, what were they before? Did they go up by ten percent, twenty percent, is there a percentage involved, or...
Everything, we, we looked, we took every individual, even, even facility, down to shelters that, size shelters, and compared them to what other folks in the county were charging, what other folks of similar size, other departments, similar size, a demand, we, we went through it, it took us six months, we actually did a six-month assessment of this and brought... We actually did a six-month assessment of this and brought, the first time we brought it to the RAC was in February of last year, if I, if I remember right. And then we started work, took us about six months to do this, so.
So this makes us competitive?
Absolutely, yes, sir. Now, we're not, a lot of things are not cost recovery, but there are a lot of things that are. We still have the ability to negotiate with large events, large tournaments. Actually have a, a group coming in, the Farm Equiments Association. We negotiated them coming in Thursday, March nineteenth, bringing fifty guys that are attending a, an equipment seminar and show in Charlotte to our Skeet and Trap Range. We're gonna have lunch at Rankin Lake, fifty of them are gonna utilize it for an afternoon, and it's probably gonna be the biggest one-day payday that we've, we've had doing a lot of things. But, but we're able to negotiate.
Thank you.
Jim, just to continue that answer, though, you know, when we were going through this in, in the commission, we, we obviously had the original fees, we had the proposal for the increases, so everything was transparent as far as that went. Nothing looked really out of line. And of course, you know, when we get to a motion, you know, the commission did approve this unanimously, so it, you know, it, it kind of fell in line, you know. We, I would apologize, you know, just to say that you did not have the information to see what it was and now what it's going to for prospective purposes, but nothing was, you know, significantly, as far as a jump goes, you know, everything that's increased, you know, obviously went up to some degree, but it was all within reason.
I would like to add that the biggest increase was, we, we actually had, and we've only had a couple of these, was a commercial for-profit at Sims Park. Used to be three hundred a day. We put that at a thousand, just because that's what the market is. We were giving it away, and we found out we were giving a couple of things away, but that was, that was the, you know, the most significant. Small things like our swim lessons, we've been really giving those away as well, but we felt like it was a good thing, not really giving them away, but it's a very, very, very low cost. Ten dollars for a two-week session. It's, we found out that everyone else is charging twenty, twenty-five, thirty, and thirty-five dollars for those two-week lessons, and we wanted to make it still affordable, but we only went up, we went up five dollars at this particular time, which is a fifty percent increase, but.
But you're still teaching kids to swim.
But we're still teaching kids, it's very, very, very affordable. The demand was high, we, we were, we were, we were full at, at ten as well, and we, we know we're gonna be full at fifteen as well, because it's a very, very, very good value.
Yes, sir.
Did you make a motion and need a second, or do we need a motion?
No, I said I would, but, you know, I was waiting for Jim, but I will at this time. So the committee did approve the proposed fee increase with a five-to-zero vote, and I will make that in the form of a motion.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck, again, for, for time. I'll go ahead and do this one, too. Just, Greenway Cycle Rentals approached, again, staff about the possibility of renting bicycles out at Rankin Lake. This would be used on the, the walkway, and just to, again, cut to the chase, basically, commission found that, at this point in time, that was probably not going to fit well into that environment with that being basically a walking track, and that we would approach them at a later point in time, maybe when the Greenway has been expanded its full length, where, you know, they could use, you know, they could get in, into the Greenway from there, but, you know, use the linear park idea of Greenway, not the circular walkway at Rankin Lake. So, so we just politely said that we would, you know, tell them, come back at a later date, so. And that, that ends my report.
All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Do we need a motion for the report?
Didn't we do that?
No, I thought in the last one.
We don't need a motion for the report.
Okay. Seventeen, Central City Revitalization Housing Committee meeting. Chairman Chris Solomon. And that'll be number seven.
The Central City Revitalization Housing Committee, we met Wednesday, February eleventh at three-thirty. Item number one, and I'm, with the council's permission, I'm gonna go very quickly, too, just because we've been here for a while. But item number one, I did want to hit on, because it is the Downtown Gastonia Merchants' Association, and they came before the committee to request some startup funds. And we have the president of the Downtown Gastonia Merchants' Association, Mr. Josh Ruiz, who has been very patiently waiting to speak. He asked me if I was last, and I was like, always, I'm always last, so, but that's not really true. But Josh is here, and he will tell you just briefly a little bit about what the Downtown Gastonia Merchants' Association is doing. I know, Dr. Curlin, you favored having something with the business community involved, and they started this on their own. So far, they've only been together, how many months, Josh?
Four months, three months.
Three months, and they've already done more than most of the merchants' associations that formed and fell apart over the years. So very, very active, very, very proactive, and I'm excited about some of the things they're doing. But he, he will tell you a little bit about their group and why they were asking for the startup funds.
First of all, good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Josh Ruiz, and I am the president for the Gastonia Downtown Merchants' Association that was very recently formed, with the understanding that we wanted to develop a association that would not take the same form as others have in the past and have not succeeded. The purpose of the association is to have a, a group of individuals that are vested in the downtown area, but the, the purpose of the, the request of the funds was to develop an association that would also include the entire MSD area. We not only want to just focus on Main and Marietta and all these side streets right here in the downtown area, but there's so much more potential to involve other business owners in the area and the entire MSD area. I'm happy to report, I don't know if those of you have seen the Gazette recently, Mr. Brantley Smith, who owns the bike shop out of Lincolnon, who had been there established since nineteen eighty-one, has looked at Gastonia and is coming to Gastonia. So he will be open, if I'm not mistaken, in late April. Very nice man, very beneficial business to Gastonia and to the surrounding areas. I'm also hap-
It should be pointed out that Josh, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Josh, but Josh was one of the main ones that recruited that business.
Good for you. Good, thank you.
We're also happy to report to the mayor and to the council that we have a pizza facility that is coming to Gastonia. We currently have two interested parties in the old Sharkey's Building to make it a high-scale but affordable deli, something very quick, accessible to the administration offices, to the attorney's offices, to the Bell Bosnian, but more importantly, to me and to all the other businesses in downtown Gastonia. I am happy to report that growth is very evident in downtown Gastonia, something that has been, that has been needed for a very long time. We've seen Gastonia in a very stagnant form, a very complacent area, but we're happy to report that with the building of this association, we have started to attract more possible business owners to the downtown Gastonia area to look at a potential of bringing their business to downtown Gastonia. The funding request that I had presented to the Center City Revitalization Committee was to provide the association with startup funds to allow us to begin to organize and structure the association more professionally. We wanted to be able to develop promotional materials that we could hand out to potential business owners. We are looking at signage to go in a lot of the vacant buildings that are in downtown, to be able to house not only just a, a shell of a building, but to provide something to show a potential business owner possibly visiting Gastonia that there is potential here for you and your business. Some of the signs would basically read, "We can see you here with us to contact the Downtown Merchants' Association," which we have already started partnerships with a lot of the landlord and business owners in downtown Gastonia, to make sure that we provide potential business owners incentives to come to Gastonia. That's one of the biggest things that has lacked in previous years, and that's what we're trying to accomplish now. And so we've had a lot of success with that thus far, and we want to continue that. But unfortunately, the association, this newly-formed association, does not have any startup funds as of yet, to be able to gain the, the necessary items that we need to basically validate the association, to show that we're an actual, true association that is working diligently to bring more business to downtown Gastonia, but also to show the business owners who are currently here that the city still cares about. One of the biggest concerns I received as the new president was, we never see the city council. Nobody ever comes and visits us. And, you know, we, we don't have a lot of people that come and visit downtown Gastonia. Now, besides the, the council not visiting Gastonia or the, the businesses in downtown Gastonia, a lot of that has to do with the business itself. You know, the presentation of your business speaks volumes if somebody wants to visit you or not. And those are some very rough conversations that we've had recently with a lot of business owners, but luckily, they have taken it into consideration. We have several of them that are getting ready to apply in the new year to redo some of their facades, which I, I think will be great. Bringing that vibrant presentation to the people of, that are visiting Gastonia, to the people who are already in Gastonia, to outside cities looking into Gastonia, is gonna make a huge difference. The funding request is to basically get the proper letterheads that we need, the business cards that we need, just basic startup items that the association would need in order to begin its process of showing others that we're an actual association. It's very difficult to print one off at home and send it to somebody and say, this is official. Now, granted, after we receive the startup funds, the association would be charging an association fee to recuperate some of that money to be able to utilize it for future projects that we may have as well. I won't take up any more of your time, 'cause I'm freezing, and I appreciate you taking the opportunity to listen to the association. But I am pleased to announce that with all the members of the association, we're working very diligently to bring business back to downtown Gastonia, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Y'all are applying for the 501(c)(3).
Yes, ma'am.
Which, has that come through yet?
It has not come through as of yet. We are currently, the 501(c)(3), there used to be an organization called the Gastonia Downtown Development Corporation, which obviously is no longer in play. We are currently working with the state of North Carolina and the old members of the that association, and if we are not able to receive our 501(c)(3) immediately, then transferring theirs, which is still currently active, into the, to the Downtown Gastonia Merchants' Association. We're waiting for a response from the state. Hopefully, that will come through easier than us applying for our own, but if it can be transferred, then that's what we're, we're currently.
And you had how many members three months ago?
Three months ago, we had four.
How many do you have today?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, great. Thank you.
Yes, sir. When, Josh, when do you meet?
We meet the second, and currently, we meet very often, the second and the fourth Monday of every month, since we've asked the Convention Center to be a member of the association at no cost to the Convention Center. We have been utilizing the Convention Center to meet there, which we appreciate them, and the city allowing us to be able to utilize that facility to host our meetings, so. But we meet the second and the fourth Monday of every month.
And is that at night, or?
It's at one o'clock in the afternoon.
Have you noticed in your report, getting this ready, and it sounds great, did you find if there, are there reputable sign companies in this town?
Yes, that was one of the things that we had, we had made very clear to the, to the association and to the Center City Revitalization Committee. If granted these funds, we would not take our business outside of Gastonia for the printing, the sign companies. We would utilize the reputable companies that we do have here in town for all of our business needs. So all the funding would go right back into Gastonia, and we would not be outsourcing that to someone else.
That's good to hear.
And, yes, well, no, not a question, but I, I wanted to thank Josh for coming and talking about it a little bit. The committee did vote unanimously, three to zero, to recommend providing the $2,500 in startup funding for the Downtown Gastonia Merchants' Association, and this is gonna be funded through the Municipal Service District Fund. This is not coming out of, out of the general tax dollars. I, you know, every time something for the downtown area comes up, everybody's like, we're spending our tax dollars. This is from the MSD Fund. That is what the fund was set up for, was to, to aid in downtown development, and that's what this group does, so it's right on target with the mission of that Municipal Service District Tax. And one of the things that Josh proposed, and, and we also asked for, so it was ideal that it came together, but the city will have a voting member on the Downtown Gastonia Merchants' Association. And I would like to make in my motion that we approve the committee's recommendation and also ask that the chairman, which obviously this year would be me, the chairman of the Central City Revitalization Committee, be that appointed representation to this board.
I will second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Thank you very much, Josh.
Josh, thank you, sir.
Item number two was Mr. John Ganeshian. He's a Gastonia property owner, was at the meeting, and he had some issues regarding his property and some code enforcement actions, and staff is looking into that. They will be giving us a follow-up report at our next meeting. And then, also, staff advised us on the evaluation for removing the traffic signal at South Street and Main Avenue. It would be replaced by stop signs, and the Downtown Merchants were in agreement with that, supported that idea, so staff is certainly moving forward with that, but it requires no action of the committee, so it was presented as information only. And that concludes our report. I do want to point out to everyone, if, if you haven't looked, the last little pa, or second to last page, the little Downtown Gastonia Merchants' Association, that is their official logo. So when you see that around, that is them, that is their group, and they will be advertising that. They already have a Facebook page, so go on there and like that and share that good news, 'cause they're doing some good things, and we've been pushing forever for it to be done by the business community. It is now being done by the business community, and we need to support that, so go on there and like it. Thank you. That concludes.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney.
No report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
The management report.
Mr. Members of the council, a few things. We will be meeting tomorrow with the Power Agency One Electric Cities Rate Committee in Concord. We and the others will be debating the various options for electric rates. There are three on the table. There is one, just no further borrowing where we, where we restructure our, our debt. That would actually have an increase to the city. And the other two are some additional restructuring of debt. Full restructuring of debt is really what we talked about at, at the workshop, and that's what we're gonna try to, to get accomplished, but we have one vote. We've been communicating, so we'll let you know how that all goes. Next, the Important Facilities Committee, Management Committee. Tomorrow, we have four proposals. I believe Mr. Sim and Eddie has now withdrawn, so maybe three proposals that we'll be discussing. That's important for the web theater tomorrow. Of course, any member of council, other members of the committee, other than the committee that would like to come, cordially invited. The, we're beginning department budget reviews starting Monday, so all next week, there'll be meetings with all the different departments. The property valuation by the county has been improved. Most recent sales have actually been higher, and so now they estimate the loss of our, our tax base to be about two percent rather than that three and a half. And so if you use also a percent and a half, which they're suggesting for review, for people that do their appeals, that would be maybe three and a half percent. So instead of a million dollars, you know, we're looking at a number a lot less, you know, six fifty or something, seven hundred thousand, so, so that's good. On the other, on the other side of the ledger, the federal government is cha, is going to change, from what we understand midway through the year, the rules that, that deal with overtime, federal, the federal fair labor standard practice, and they're gonna move it from a, anyone that makes $20,000 or less is just assumed to be, you know, eligible for overtime. They're gonna move that up to maybe forty thousand. They're debating exactly where that number will rot, but that will affect us, and so we'll have to accommodate that in the coming budget. Ice and snow storms, we, we were lucky and good at the same time. Our crews did a great job. Two municipalities ran out of slag, they needed help. Dallas and Lowell, we helped them out. You know, they purchased some additional slag from us, and so we were able to do some partnering there. to do some partnering there. Also, I'll just say that this is the season for waterline breaks, we have in one tonight at Acre Center. We've had them all over the place, individuals are having them within their buildings, that goes with the temperature variation, and it goes with territory, and that's all I have.
Thank you. City Council reports, Ms. Perry.
I would just like to say thank you to the staff and everyone that did participate, which I know it was all, everybody to some degree on the weather. Our staff did a wonderful job with the streets and keeping everybody informed into what was going on, and that was good, because we were, as far, as far as I was concerned, I was able to communicate that with citizens when they say something, okay? So I certainly appreciated that. And the bike shop, Mr. Mayor, that is coming downtown-
Yeah.
-they are using local sign vendors. And, and, and that, that, that's a good thing, okay, because when we get businesses in town, whether it's downtown or wherever, you know, it helps everybody, and that's the biz, that, that's what economic development's all about, is helping everybody. So that's my report.
I'm sure I had a report somewhere, but I've talked more this meeting than I think in the last 10 combined, so we're gonna go on to Mr. Gallagher.
Two things, Mr. Mayor. One, stormwater, can we look at something for people that can't afford having, you know, are we gonna be able to look at something like that in the future?
Councilman, I think you brought that up at the work session, and actually, we reviewed a draft of that today, so that is forthcoming.
Thank you, sir. The other thing is Transportation Committee, I would like to resign from that position and nominate Todd Pierceall to take my place. Do I have to make that in the form of a motion? Mr. Mayor, or is that your appointment, sir?
It, it's not a mayoral, it's not a mayoral appointment. Transportation Committee of the council, the city council-
Yes, sir.
-is approved by majority vote of the council.
I second that motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
I don't want to interrupt reports, but thank you, Councilman Gallagher. That helps it, it plays along in line so that I can better keep up with the city on what's going on with the MPO, so I certainly appreciate that gesture very much. And also, to lessen my duties, not that I don't take them all seriously, I'm wondering if someone would like to take my place sitting on the shill, Board of Directors.
When do they meet?
4:00 every other, twice a month, every second month or so?
It's every second month, it's like-
On a Thursday.
It's Thursday, I can remember what-
Third Thursday.
It's like the third Thursday of the month or something. Is that something-
Just think about it, whoever wants to do it, you know, just let us-
You don't, you don't have to do it tonight, but with, with the MPO, and then obviously going on the Transportation Committee and some other things, my, my meeting schedules getting very, very heavy and clogged.
Okay, we heard all that, thank you. It's my, it's my council report. And thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, that is it.
I just want to say I'm proud of this council tonight, their vote that they made on the Dr. Martin Luther King Way, and the fact that everybody seemed to have worked together to find a reasonable solution for the city of Gastonia. Proud of y'all. That's all I got.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have several items. First off, I attended the, the delegate update for Central United Council of Governments, and one of the focuses at this particular meeting was the amount of our workforce that's aging, and unfortunately, many are being challenged that they cannot find jobs. There's a new initiative, the Senior Community Service Employment Program, and I have handouts for all of you, and I would like to also, Ed, if we could have those at City Hall. It specifically helps businesses negotiate the waters that would like to bring older, experienced workers onboard and to get them jobs. Secondly, I, I recently got a copy of Charlotte's preeminent African-American magazine, Pride. There's two important, there's an important article in there, Police Etiquette 101, which deals with how to deal with the police when you're stopped, or it's a field inquiry or something like that, and I commend them for doing that. But other than that, I also saw that Charlotte Mecklenburg Police Department has a recruiting ad in this magazine, and I think really we should investigate that in, in our area of looking to diversify our public safety entities. I think it'd be a great place to place an ad. Lastly, I was able to meet with Congressman McHenry, Chief of Staff, at our airport to investigate any federal funding opportunities which could help to either expand or safeguard our airport in the future. So what they've done is they're preparing a report, I've got a preliminary, and I handed it over to Ed of different grant opportunities and different requirements that we could look at. And lastly, I attended, and again, since we missed a council meeting, this is not 100% timely, but there was a 2015 renewal of purpose for a greater Gaston County, it was at St. John's Baptist Church on February 5th, and I wanted to commend our police chief. He spoke very eloquently, very openly, in bringing out some, some information to the community that was much needed, and I believe he had a calming effect on a number of the community concerns, chief. But also, we also, we all know that the ship doesn't sail smoothly all the time, but he provided a steady hand at the wheel during this time, and I very much commend him with, for that, and he had a number of his command staff there as well, which did an excellent job, and I saw a lot of community openness on both sides there. So thank you, chief, for your leadership in that area. That's my report, sir.
Thank you, sir. In closing, very quickly, Mr. Back here and I were at the Earl Groves Honor Banquet the other night, hundreds of people at, at the conference center, and he, of course, he's on the wall right there, he's, he was a former mayor, and did a wonderful job. He did a marvelous, and we also recognized Paul Avery, who's stunning good health, who was there with his, with his wife. In, in closing again, Earl got up just to say that he is 87, 88 years old, that his eyesight's going, his hearing's going, he said, "I might blackout any minute." He said, "I'm gonna blackout." He said, "But the only good thing is, I can still drive." And that's what he said. Is there a motion to adjourn?